Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand as Councilmember Goldberg provides the invocation and a moment of silence in recognition of the passing of former Councilmember Curtis Miltier and the passing of former Councilmember Jeffrey Gardi, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pray, Holy Spirit, be present in our lives and give your blessings to all that are present and listening tonight. Our hearts are heavy tonight with the loss of two of our former council members, Curtis Miltier and Jeff Gardi, who served our community with grace and respect. Be with their families and give them peace. In our respect for them, let us have a moment of silence and allow their memories always serve as a blessing to us and their families. Moment of silence, please. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Excuse me. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember LaBarlow?
Here.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Mayor Dooman?
Here. The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of February the 2nd, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council, the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council, the City of Suffolk, in the closed meeting.
Council, motions in order. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Over.
Councilman Williams?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember LaBarlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Now move to approval in the minutes from the August 18th, 2021 work session and regular meeting. And a motion would be in order. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Councilman Williams?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember LaBarlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have a special presentation this evening concerning COVID-19 update. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. With us this evening is Dr. Nancy Welch, Director of the Health Department, Chesapeake's Healthy, Director, excuse me, and she's also the acting Director for the Western Tidewater area or district. Many of you probably know Dr. Welch. She's been around quite a number of years and working in the Health Department and we're, I feel privileged to have her with us this evening. Dr. Welch?
It's a pleasure to be back in Western Tidewater and to, I'm always happy to serve the community here. What I want to do tonight is I'm going to give you some information that you commonly ask for, but I also am going to perhaps give you some new information to add some perspective and food for thought. Information that you commonly ask for and people want to know, yes, in terms of the trend of Omicron cases, which is the primary variant now, it's certainly on the downward trend. Your percentage positivity is about 22%. I can attest though to the accuracy of that because there are so many tests that you can take home now and they're not necessarily reported. What I'd like to do with that information in mind is to then move forward to some of the impacts that aren't often discussed. And that's, this is a very, this is, in my mind, one of the most disturbing slides of this entire presentation. And what it is showing is the marked decrease in preventive screening that we have seen throughout the COVID pandemic. You can see for colon rectal cancer, for mammography, and I'll show you some information on the next slide with regards to diabetes and chronic disease. Either people are concerned about contracting COVID, so they are not coming and making appointments, or the facilities are not making appointments because of the concern for COVID. So it's a two-way street. But what we have here is a marked reduction in preventive screening. And certainly in public health and the healthcare community, we've worked very hard to get people to understand the value of this preventive screening so that any cancer can be detected early. So the thing we're going to be faced with as an impact of this pandemic that we often don't discuss is we are going to see cancer detected at later stages. We're going to see probably preventable deaths from cancer because they're not detected at the early stages. So I think we need to put that in perspective as to what we can do and start now the campaign to encourage people to start doing the screening and facilities to be able to accommodate so the screening can occur. This next slide, I don't know if you have a copy of it or you can read it, but it basically is talking about the reduction I've just mentioned, 45 to 50 some percent reduction in your, in your people getting cancer checkups and people who have complex or multi-involved diseases and getting follow-up. Again, this leads to just my basic concern that preventive measures have not been able to occur, putting people at increased risk of disease being later down the road from what we'd like to be so that we can adequately treat it. And I think we need to put all of our thinking, be sure to put all of our thinking to include that information at hand because immediately we need to start encouraging the preventive screening. We can't wait till later. There are already people out there who are suffering as a result. This is kind of a, got a lot of information on it type slide, but the bottom line is, this is for Suffolk, the vaccination status. And I want to talk a little bit about why we talk about vaccination. I know there's lots of different opinions about it and it, there's lots of controversy associated. And what I want to share with you is why we even talk about it to begin with. Let's talk about the basics of infection. If you get the coronavirus, if you get the Omicron virus in your system, doesn't mean you have disease. Means you're infected with a virus. What the virus has to do in order to cause disease, it has to replicate like crazy, multiply like crazy. It has to build up what we call a viral load or an army of viruses so they can travel throughout your system and then they can cause disease. That's what the incubation period is all about, the time when this virus multiplies. And variants are basically mistakes in that replication process. You can imagine if producing lots of viruses and multiplying, you can understand that mistakes can occur. Some viruses make mistakes, they're just little, and it really doesn't impact the effectiveness of vaccines, like measles. You know, you don't have to get a measles shot every year because it does, it does mutate too in the replication process, but the changes are very minimal and the effectiveness of vaccines and antibodies are not modified that much. Coronavirus and flu, on the other hand, they love to change dramatically. They don't change just a little bit. They change dramatically. And as a result, that's what makes the vaccines less effective. You've seen that? You've seen that in the news as we've moved from the Delta to the Omicron in terms of the effectiveness of vaccine. Still certainly is effective if you're, I like to say that Las Vegas is not just in Nevada. We all are making odds decisions and certainly having been vaccinated even with the Omicron right now, the odds are better that you will be protected from hospitalization and ICU, et cetera. But that, that is a reality. So what do we do to try to prevent this reduction in vaccine effectiveness? The bottom line is, we don't want to have variants. So we need to stop that variance. And what did I just say? The variant is a mistake in the replication process. So if we stop the replication and that stop is made by way of antibodies, both if you have the disease, that just is not as effective as a vaccine, and if you have the vaccine, that stops the replication. And if you stop the replication, then indeed you reduce dramatically the result or the possibility of a variant, of a change that will affect the effectiveness because that's just how the virus works. Viruses are like people, they're different. And these are two dramatic differences that I've mentioned to you in terms of, say, measles and the coronavirus. And that's a lot of the reason coronavirus is a big cause of colds, a different variant than what we're seeing here. But that's why you're going to get many colds a year because it, it changes. This is a slide that relates to when we had the Delta variant, not the Omicron. But this, this is a slide from the Mayo Clinic and certainly shows a dramatic impact of the use of masks. The impact is not as dramatic now with Omicron. That is absolutely true, that there are differences. In fact, differences have been studied to such an extent with a different mask, cotton surgeon, N95 mask, where they have even broken it down into a matrix and distance where the minimal, where it's protective, et cetera. But no one has debated that a mask is better than no mask in terms of transmission. It, not by itself, mitigation entails a number of different engagements. But I think it's important for you to understand these components. And I, I know it's been confusing because there's, you know, I like to say that, that science is not the truth. Science is a search for the truth. But that means that as we learn more, things change. That makes it very difficult. None of us like to have change that just sort of comes up and keeps happening and keeps happening. I've had a lot of problems with this too. It's like going back to med school real fast. But we need to understand that this research and this knowledge base is important to help us make decisions and to learn new things and to put things in perspective. I did want to share with you, and we have our epidemiologist here tonight and we have the nurse manager from Western Tidewater. And you have, I think you have in your packet, maybe not, but I have it on the slides. We have community testing events and we, we have vaccination events and these are ones that are in Suffolk. And if you want to ask any questions about those, I'm going to ask the epidemiologist or the nurse manager to come forward because they deal with that in Suffolk every day. So that's important. But any questions you have for me, please?
Thank you, Dr. Welch. Council, Councilman Fawcett?
Doc, I really appreciate, I mean, I loved hearing you, this conversation tonight. We haven't had quite an in-depth conversation like you brought to the table tonight. We certainly know there's a lot of talk about the Omicron, what it is, what it isn't, where a mask is, whether you use an N95 versus a cloth-based mask and this debate on thread counts and all this stuff about what mask and doesn't cover what. But, you know, I've been working for the past year doing COVID centers, large COVID centers, I'm on the mask side of it for the last year, and I'm now doing the Military Circle one, and I've also done Hampton and Portsmouth. I have found that the, the testing, for instance, has dropped off dramatically. We operate testing, your slide probably isn't quite up to speed on the timing, but we do our testing over at Military Circle on Mondays through Friday and then we pick it up Saturday and Sundays.
Right.
And you do not need an appointment. You can walk in and we will handle it. We do not have any more requirements that you have in appointment. It's always nice. It speeds the process up, but you don't have to walk in with it. I also found that the vaccines have dropped off drastically. I'm looking at the numbers that are coming in on my phone throughout the region tonight and it's just amazing how both the testing and the numbers are falling off. So part of that might be where you talked about the swing with home testing. It's all well and good, but it's not going to be what you need if you have to have required testing in order to work at a specific place or travel or do those things. So I just wanted to make that comment. Wonderful presentation. Come back anytime. I really enjoyed hearing this. And you're right, we have dropped off drastically on the normal screening processes. I think some of the facilities have just now started coming back on doing elective surgeries and elective things in their, in their offices and clinics. So there's a lot going on here other than just a one virus. There's a lot going on here. People are still getting sick. People are still going to die from some of this. There's a lot of hinges to this, their health and what they have behind them. So, you know, just because you get the vaccine doesn't mean you're not going to get yourself in a bind. Of course, the vaccines do help, like you had stated, but I can tell you, I've known a lot of people that have gotten sick even after they've had all the vaccines, including the booster. So it's, it's just going to happen. It might be worse for some people than others, but thank you again. I appreciate you hearing from you.
Thank you very much. And I've certainly been to the Military Circle Mall, Metrison, and taken the tour around and I, I think it's a very well organized resource that's available. And people certainly do have a tendency to respond in a surge and then they get more relaxed and it decreases. And the message I want to spend tonight is, we have had too much preventive care as a result that has been delayed. We're going to see long-term adverse effects from that. And we can stop this variant production with vaccination. I like to say that vaccination will end the pandemic. We'll go to a steady state like flu. I'm hoping that we'll even have a shot like flu once a year that people can take. And masks will allow us to walk that pathway safely.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. Dr. Welch, welcome back to Suffolk. We're glad to see you. I walked out and I saw you sitting there. I said, well, great, Dr. Welch is back. So I hope you're here for the long term again like you were before.
I just can't leave you guys alone.
You're always welcome to come back to Suffolk.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to have you.
Councilman Johnson?
And Dr. Welch, I want to say thank you as well for what you brought us tonight. And I hope that's what we're going to start preaching now for people to start looking after themselves. And hopefully the public's listening now to hear that. It's always been a concern of mine that we were backing off all this stuff and it's time to start looking after ourselves again. But thank you. And I agree. It's so nice to have you here. And that was such a concise, clear report. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, Dr. Welch, first of all, thank you for a great presentation, very informative. I just have one question. As it relates to the C1.2 variant, do you have any information regarding that?
About the new variant that's come out?
Yes.
Just that it has come out, it certainly hasn't taken over, but it is another, and, and I can't tell you what trend it's going to go because there isn't enough of it out there yet to say what trend. But it's, and again, is another example of how these mistakes, variants, occur in replication. And our goal is to stop that replication. Then you stop the variants. And then you can be at a steady state much quicker. But yes, sir, I know they've come out and we certainly have had some, not necessarily here, but in the country, but, and in the state, but we don't have enough cases to actually say anything about the trend.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Welch, thank you very much for your presentation. It was great. I've known you for many, many years. You've never let me down on giving good advice and helping. You've helped an awful lot of people throughout the whole entire region and I thank you for your service. And you've just been great. And information tonight was just absolutely superb. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Welch, I did have one question. I had a citizen call me on Monday and had difficulty getting a booster shot. If you get any recommendation there, I'm not sure where she tried, but I think she had mentioned she had tried a couple of the pharmacies and they didn't have boosters. Is that just an isolated incident? So we really have no issue with?
I don't, what I would do is I refer her to, you have, did you get a packet? Did this, did you get the packet of the slides? Because that has the vaccination events that we have scheduled. Vaccination events?
Okay.
It was the last slide. There we go. And? There we go. So I would certainly share that. We need to promote that. I would tell you one thing that I would love to see us strengthen here in Western Tidewater is that they don't have the advantage of having a total, totally directed public relations, social media person. And so we are not as effective as I'd like to see us in getting the information out. Like, for example, this information on vaccination events and testing events. They certainly do a good job, but it's hard when people have multiple tasks and multiple jobs that they have to do. So we're working on some of those things.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, we'll consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of city council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If there are any items that members of city council wish to remove, the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none, a motion to adopt the agenda as presented would be appropriate at this time. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve.
Move for approval. Councilman Goldberg.
Second.
We have a motion for approval in a second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Dooman.
Madam Clerk, please present the items for consideration.
Item number seven, an ordinance to appropriate funds from the general fund committed fund balance for public safety equipment needs and to transfer funds to the capital projects fund budget for the Bennetts Creek Recreation Center Capital Project. Item eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. Item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for a stormwater local assistance fund project. And item number 10, an ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Article Three, Division 14, Section 2-463, Education Committee of the Code of the City of Suffolk.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Item seven, the city's general fund adopted unassigned fund balance exceeded 20% rate outlined in the city's financial policies. In accordance with, and this was for FY21, in accordance with adopted policies, as is recommended, that the $500,000 of the operating surplus above the 20% minimum rate be appropriated for one-time spending or capital needs. Is recommended for council consideration that, number one, is $300,000 be appropriate towards the Bennetts Creek Recreation Center, $100,000 for firefighter recruits turnout gear, and $100,000 for the department, police department flock camera system. I would like to note on the flock camera system, that is a returning cost each year, but we did identify it in here. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of general fund and capital fund budgets for FY22 by $500,000. In regards to item eight, the city has received $200,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management in support of the Department of Fire and Rescue. The funds will be utilized, will be used to purchase equipment to upgrade the regional mobile communications center. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues, expenditures of the consolidated grants fund for FY22 by $200,000. No local match is required. Item nine, the city has received $195,237 from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality to assist with the city's installation of a hydrodynamic separator to be located near the Suffolk Seaboard Train Station. And this is a little bit up the path. There's a low area in there. The adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund for FY22 by $195,237. A local match is required of the same amount of $195,237, which is in the stormwater contingency, stormwater capital contingency. And for purposes, what the separator does is separate foreign objects and oil in that case to allow the affluent to the rivers to be cleaner, and then it gets vacuumed out later on. Item 10 is an ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Article Three, Division 14, Section 2-463, Education Committee of the City Code. The purpose of the amendment is to clarify the committee's purpose, makeup, and role of the committee.
Are there any questions at this time about any of the items? Councilman Fawcett.
No questions. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move for approval of the consent agenda as it's been presented.
We had a motion from Councilman Fawcett for approval. Do we have a second? Councilman Johnson?
Second.
We have a second for approval. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no public hearings this evening. We have no ordinances, and we have no resolutions. At this time, we'll move to staff reports, and we have a staff report in regards to the compensation study update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'll present the item. I will ask Andy to assist me from the back on turning the slides as I request. As you are pretty much aware, we've been working on a compensation study update over the last several months. We have many discussions on this prior as council's desire to, number one, look at a step plan on the public safety side. But one thing we pointed out early on is that compensation review for all of our city employees, not only public safety, but our public works, public utilities, and all of our staff, has not been done in full since 2008. We've had some adjustments done, but not a full study. So we requested, as part of the operating budget, as you recall, to start a full compensation study. We hired Evergreen after going out for procurement, and as part of that, we have had several meetings. As we talked, you know, we were hoping to be a little bit further along than we were in December, and then here we are in February. So I'd like to, tonight, to take the time to walk through what we're recommending. We still have some work to do, but we want to recommend the method and the path forward. And in regards to plans' goals, we wanted to establish pay scales which are competitive with our neighboring cities within Hampton Roads, and develop a pay plan which is affordable and sustainable, address compression issues where feasible, and implement and identify current pay practices don't align with the city's pay policies or procedures. As we move to the next slide, you saw this in December presentation, but what we've done here, this is just a quick synopsis, but I will go through a more in-depth on where we're at. We did the market analysis for both the general fund and the public utilities, I mean, public utilities, public safety, you can tell where my background was, and to move forward. And we completed and are completing the general funds this time. We're in progress with some of the analysis work. We did complete design plans for public safety step plan and are working on the general fund step plan initiative right now. And we informed you that we'd bring back something tonight for you. This was previously. Now, as regards to the Evergreen market analysis, they collected data, salary data from the following localities, and you can see those are our competing neighbors, six of the big cities in the 757. I'd like to point out that Norfolk will be commencing their own study this year, and I believe one of the other communities, maybe Newport News, is working on some elements, too. Data was developed to develop recommended pay scales. I'll go over some examples here in a minute. The public safety market analysis is complete. The general employee market analysis is received under review and being back received, I think, this afternoon. When we look at the next slide, this is just a snapshot of one position, which would be a police officer. As we look across the market, we show that in an entry, this is in a front lines of our police department. You can see we're going to be fairly competitive there as this is our recommended in red. Currently, if we look at this position, it starts at, thought I had it here, I think it starts at about 40, starts around 42, I believe. But we have set this up to remain competitive. As I said, Norfolk will be doing a study later on this year, is our understanding. But this shows you the max, mid, and the min for those positions. Moving on up and still staying with the public safety, we look at the police lieutenant. Now, you can see here, as we move up, we're still competitive with the region. Now, Chesapeake just adopted a new play plan, which was fairly aggressive. If you remove them, we are competitive in the region. And as we look, how this works is as we go to the next slide, these different positions, whether it's police, fire, and hopefully, our general fund employees, we fall into a framework known as a step plan. And what we, what would happen was, we'd look at each employee, we'd select where they fall within the plan to start out. Now, when you happen here, the first step, you see step one, two, three, four, and five. But as you look at the years, they'd be starting out at step one, year two, step year, their first full year, they'd go to step two at the top, as you see years and steps. And then three, and then on year, three, they'd go to four, and then on up. Now, there, as you get into the middle range, you skip a year. And this is, as we had some earlier meetings with you, 101, this is what we're showing. And I know the numbers here are a little difficult, but I just wanted to give a framework of what we were seeing. The methodology for the step plan to insert someone in there or a person, we go to the next slide. What we're looking at here, two things. We want to be, first of all, we want to get to market scale, and we want to remain competitive over the next year as we move out. So what we've shown here is a 2.5 incremental increase. And then you would get 50% credit for your time of service prior to what you're in your current position. So example, if you're here for 15 years, your prior service, where you get 50% credit would be on 10 years if you've been in your position for five years. So you were moving on as a city employee for 10 years, the last five years you've been in a certain position. So you get 50% credit for your first 10 years, and then you get 50% credit for the time in your current position. What this does, and what we found this does in working, is it helps eliminate some of the compression issues that we had seen. Now, there's different ways to go about it, and we've talked different ways, but this seems to address some of the compression issues that we'd seen. Now, what's this mean on the longevity of it? What's the implementation cost? We're looking at 8.8 million estimated. And then for annual increments on the estimate of assuming that half are moving a step each year, you're looking at probably 1.2 to 1.5. But this is for all, this includes benefits, this includes all staff. In support of the first year, as we're looking to bring this in for the first three to four months, it would be, of course, this year's would be, if it's three months, it would be 2.2 million. The support for the following years, of course, would be our growth in our revenues. As the city grows, it would help support that. What we need to do is try to move forward in developing this, and the methodology is key. That's the key spot that we're in. And the recommendations would be to proceed with a step plan framework for both public safety and the general fund population. You treat everyone the same. We do not have issues in the long run of how you address one pay plan versus another pay plan. We would recommend utilizing placement methodology. We would address any specific issues. If we've come across an issue with specific, you know, oddity to it, then we would look at that and address it. We would complete policy amendments needed to, as we implement and as we look, as we move forward. And we would be moving this into place with the activation of, shortly after the activation of our new payment plan, payment system this year, this fiscal year. That was quite a bit in a short period. I know we have met a little bit prior, there's some meetings on this and discussed some things, and I'm sure you have many questions.
Council, questions, comments? Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, we talked about 50% for time of service, 50% for credit of time of, in position. Will 50% get us to where we need to be, or is it closer to 70%?
By using, we've run this model several times, and I've worked with, as you've talked about the 70% scenario.
Right.
And together, we've, I think we both agree that this will work.
Okay. And the cost, the total cost is 8.8 million?
The total cost is 8.8 million for all staff, including benefits.
For everything? Okay.
What it does is bring our staff in line with the market. It does put a 2.5% in there because next year, you would not see any increase salary was, not in the next operating budget. You'd have to even, you'd have to rotate around to FY24.
All right. And we can find the money for this, the 8.8?
We are looking at, of course, this year with our revenues, we feel the support for this fiscal year is fine. We will be looking, as we move through the operating budget, to establish the payment. Now, your implementation is moving everyone at one time is your big cause. As you get established, then your annual cost would not be as great. Because now you've moved them, and now you're seeing people, you're not seeing everyone taking a step each year because those in the middle may have a skip year.
All right. Mayor, I might have some others in a minute, but right now, let's.
Get another shout, Councilman Fawcett.
Yeah, I just want to go back on this slide you had up there on 50/50. So with your 50/50, is that going to bring us to 100%?
What we looked at there was looking at different methodologies of how you credit something because we were looking really at that point at compression issues that had been experienced earlier and how to relieve different issues that had arise. And so, you know, there's, one is that you just give credit towards longevity. But I think you ought to give some credit to having moved up and being in a position that you're working for and understanding that, you know, you achieved. Give yourself some incentive that you would want to, you know, you can ride out in a position at 70% of whatever and continue on, but.
But it's 50%, no matter how you cut it. It's not 100%, it's 50%.
It's 50% of the years prior to a position. If you worked, if you're with the city 15 years. If you worked, if you're with the city 15 years, in your first 10 years, you're in different positions. You get 50% of that credit. And then you get in your current position, let's say it's five years, you get 50% of that. So you're talking about, you know, in the years, and this is for placement in the framework.
But most, most pay plans are one for one to get to 100%, so I don't know how you're going to cut the 50/50 in there.
Okay. Well, what we're looking at, as you take a look at, if you did 70%, we're about in the same, of just longevity, you're about in the same ballpark.
So if you did 70, I'm looking for the magic number 70, not 50. I'm looking for the magic number 70, which put you about a million for public safety, for instance, that'd put about a million dollars over the 3.2 that you talked about to us a few weeks ago, when we were talking about public safety. You said the cost of public safety would be 3.2. So that's at 50%. So I'm looking for 70% with a $1 million tag on it, they can, this is, the problem with this is not going to fix the compression, which you're going to do. We're still going to have the compression. You haven't convinced me of anything about removing the compression, because they're not getting credit for certain things here.
Well, in the room I sat in this morning, and when we worked through this, it showed the examples that we had, that we did adjust, and that they're almost similar.
Well, the problem is, in 2016, when Evergreen did this study, you know, you had a percentage, a large percentage of the public safety people that got, put in positions with no raise, and it showed it in the Evergreen study. And here we are again, trying to get this thing over the threshold. And I'm not, I can't speak to the other folks, the city employees, because you haven't presented anything. I'm only looking at what you've presented for public safety. And that's where the rub is at with me right now, because we're not close enough. And until it gets a little closer, 50% is not going to do it, because we're going to go right back to where we started from. This is not going to fix the problem. So if it's a matter of funding, why don't we pony up the funding, and let's get the compression complete and move on, so that we're not dealing with this? Because I guarantee you, we're going to come back to this in a few years, because this plan's not going to get there. It's not going to get there. So that's what I'm looking at, is if you can get it to 70%, you fix your compression, you move on, you don't have this issue next year, the year after, or 10 years. We aren't going to get to 100% because we can't afford the price tag on it. We know that. So it's a matter of, we've got to figure out how we're going to fix it, because I can see that this is not going to fix the compression. And therefore, I'm not going to put my head on nothing that doesn't fix the compression. And if we don't get it, move it up, on the 50% mark's not going to get it there. It's not going to get there. I've looked at several of these formulas, and I don't, it's not, it's not resonating with me. So I'm just making a statement here tonight that I feel like we're not where we need to be. I think you've got a plan, but I think it needs to go back and get some more work done to it. Because if it comes forward, I wouldn't vote on it tonight based on that. I won't put my hat on that. I appreciate the hard work everybody does and what they're doing, but I'm arguing the point right now, that 50% is not the number that's going to fix this compression. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Johnson?
Al, I got, I just have a few questions. Number one, for the point of the people that are listening out there and for the public, explain just a step plan. We've got two issues going on here, as far as I can see. We're trying to balance our wages. And the other one is, what does a step plan, plan bring to the table? Are there any other cities entitled, or do they do it?
Well, Chesapeake has just adopted a step plan.
But what is, what is the glory of the step plan?
Well, an employee can see where they're moving during their career. They can look ahead and understand how they're going to get to a certain place. If you just talk how we do today, you have ranges, you have bid, max, min, you know, you really don't know what type of action that during budget times going to occur. You don't have no insight. And you still don't, in reality, if we're in tight times. But they have an idea, but in a step plan, they can see how they would move through the organization, whether if they moved up, or if they just stayed in the same slot, if they stay in the same position. They can see ahead of what, what they can anticipate three or four years down the road.
My concern, though, is, so are we going to still do performance reviews and raise people's salary on the basis of performance, or no?
Well, actually, performance reviews, we still do performance reviews.
But this is going to give them a higher salary every year, whether they do...
Well, if you have an underperforming employee, I think that's, you'll address that.
But that, that concerns me, and it also concerns me that the rest of the world hasn't hooked into this yet. And I don't know that we need to be a guinea pig to start this thing off, and if it doesn't work, I'm concerned about the dollars and cents as well. My other concern, though, is, are we still going to be given 2.5% raises, which we typically do, in addition to this?
No. What you'd be looking at is, you would have those who are moving in their step. Now, somewhere along the line, due to cost of living and like, the whole framework may Every slot in the framework adjusts, based on, and I want to say CPI or some, some other notion. If you look, you know, if we're same salaries in those same blocks forever, obviously inflation has taken over in the, in the world. So periodically, it might be a consideration that you have a 1% or a 2% culler that adjusts the whole framework.
But, and we are going to go forward now and adjust these people that are being underpaid? I mean, we have, we do have employees that need, just like the police, my big concern, to be honest with you on all of this, is the police department. It is way past time that we got these guys in line so we can go out and hire people.
That's, that's what myself and staff are trying to move this ahead, so we can, and it's the police department, it's our frontline solid waste folks, it's all those CDL holders that we're having trouble with. I mean, we have people backfilling on the front lines of solid waste. But yes, the police department is, is critical, too. I mean, we've got to fill those vacancies and take some of the stress off our police officers. So the sooner that we become more competitive with our neighbors, the sooner we be able to retain and attract. So that's why we're trying to move. And I've met with some of the police staff through the ranks yesterday afternoon, and it's loud and clear.
It's no question. I think all of us feel the same way with that. My concern is that in implementing this, you've told us 8.5 million dollars, another million, too, for this, and we haven't even put numbers on what we're going to give. And I think we've looked at the police department already, but how about the guys out there picking up the trash?
That's, that number, that 8.5 includes everyone. It's a projection for everyone.
I don't know how you can do that, though, when we don't know what we need...
You pretty, you pretty much can make an estimate based, and when 1/3 of your workforce is in public safety, you can pretty much go from there to what your other 2/3s, or how you can project that out. And that's what I did, to do that. Because you do have, you'll, you'll have some different folks, but you have different layers of how, grades of where people are at. So I'm feeling that it's a balance here, as we look forward. And it's probably a little conservative look, when you take public safety versus some of our other activities. But I took public safety, I projected it out, to make sure we have a little over 500, around 500 employees in public safety, and then we have approximately 15, a little over So that's how we established those numbers.
My concern is, I'm not sure, are we ready to go forward with this? But yet, we need to be going forward with it today, particularly for some areas of the city. My, my concern is truly, fire does a tremendous job, we are, we are equipped there, and we want to look after them, but we've got police that need to be, we need to adjust salaries and move forward quickly. And it can't, I have a real concern.
Yeah, our turnover rates, obviously, is not as great in fire. Our turnover rate's great, is greater in police. It's great in our front lines of our general employees, where we're taking, you know, on the, on the public work side. When you have line maintenance, street crews backfilling for your solid waste occasionally, that tells you you've got an issue.
We've got to do better.
So the goal was to try to move all staff together at one time, so we can take care of everyone at one time.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennet?
Thank you. A couple of comments and questions on this. I know, piggybacking on some of the counsel Fossett just said, when we met about the fire department and what the projection would be for them to meet that 70%, I thought, we said it was going to be 4.2, and that was supposed to get them to that 70%, and not 50. And that's what I had pretty much agreed, I thought that was the right thing to do, was to get them to that point of that 4.2, to bring them up to that 70%. Wasn't that correct?
What we had discussed before, which didn't take care of the compression as well, was, what we showed you in the conference room was a 2.5%.
2.5%.
And that was, the total cost of public safety was 1.4 at that time. But it didn't address, that approach did not address the compression issue. Now, what we did, you take, and I've seen the 70% approach, too, and what we've done is taken this approach and compared it. And when I say compared it, it was not only HR, but those involved. And this seemed to, in my discussion, also work.
Okay. I, I know that we didn't get a slide on comparison of salaries and all in the fire department, when we was looking, when you showed, you just showed the police department. So comparing with the other locales, 757 area, I would like to know the comparison as well of those as well.
Those?
Fire, fire department, 757 areas?
Well, you know, obviously, I didn't put every position in the presentation. I took, and I used police because the need, and so that's how I assembled it. There's not much difference. I mean, I think we looked at some of this before. But if you're looking at, if I could, real quickly, I'll take a fire lieutenant. When you get to the lieutenant area in fire, you have Chesapeake and Hampton are your leaders in the region, but we're third. So, you know, that's, you know, I'm just looking here from some data that I've gotten, I brought with me. But, I mean, you know, we're willing to meet with counsel again on the twos, on twos, as we did before, and go through this. And we can go through each one.
Okay. Because when we, when we met and we looked at it, and with you and Jessica and her team, and we came up with these numbers, which are, it was basically the same numbers that we thought was acceptable, would be compatible with everyone except Chesapeake, and that was with the 4.2 or 4.5.
Well, it's all depending where you were and what position. As you get in the upper positions, Hampton does climb up there on fire, anyway. And that's always been that way. All of a sudden, you start seeing Hampton. But, you know, Chesapeake, when you get in the upper positions, they are higher because of what they adopted. They adopted, my understanding, one for one on years in service. That's a big ticket.
I might have some a little later.
Councilman Gober?
Thank you, Mayor. When we're talking about this, what would be, we're talking 50% at 8.8 million, what would 70% be? What more do we have to find?
I would expect that you would be up another, and I hate to make a statement, you know, that, I don't want to do the math sitting here in my head. I want to give you a bad data, but it's going to be more.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Fossett?
Just a couple more questions. I want to go back to one slide, you talked about you would address some issues, you weren't, used the word issues in one of those slides. How are you going to attack, tell me how you're going to do issues? What are the issues you're going to, you, you go back to your slide where you had it. What do you, what do you, what issues are you talking about to attack, when you see some issues of...
Well, if we have something that's, it just doesn't make, you know...
I mean, that's a generalized statement.
It is a generalized statement.
I mean, that could be anything, and then you might elect not to deal with the issue. So that's where I'm having a problem with this whole thing right now. There's a lot of generalization here, and we are trying to get these people to market. We might not get it to market with Chesapeake. You've got to watch that, because we talked about that, and Chesapeake is a very big ticket, and we don't even know if they're going to be able to sustain it. Let's be honest about it. And their employment is a whole lot larger than ours to start with, so their ticket's going to be rather large. But if we don't get them to market as close, using the denomination of the 70 percentile, you are not going to get close to where you need to be. This will not get there. I promise you, you can give me every mathematical thing you've got, and it's not going to fix that compression. And I'm honing in on that, because we asked to get this to market rate, and we're not. And then again, the mayor said, the vice mayor said, you didn't even bring a schematic tonight, you showed us police. Why didn't you bring one for fire? I mean, we know you're not ready for public utilities and public works yet, but you could at least put a slide up here, so we could see what you were talking about with fire. Was that just, you just bring it, just because you thought it timed, or what? It's not fair that we didn't see that. So this whole thing tonight, I'm going to be straight up with you, I'm very disappointed. I'm disappointed. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and put my two cents worth in. We got one more? Councilman Williams?
Yes. I would like to say that I'm, I'm in agreement with the other councilmen as it relates to the 70%. However, I want to commend you on including everybody in the plan. Everybody should be a part of this step plan. Everybody. Because, you know, our, our, our safety, fire safety, and our police officer are very important. We need them. But we also need those dedicated people, the public works, employees, the utilities employees, they matter, too. So what I'm trying to say is, if we're going to do this thing, let's do it across the board. Let's do it across the board. That's my point.
Have any other comments? I think I'm going to start with, I appreciate the time that staff has put into this. I know it's been a process, and it's been somewhat of a struggle, having spent hours and hours on it myself, having spoken to employees, having, just as recently, Monday, spent two and a half hours with the manager and HR, going through different scenarios. I have always been an advocate for time in service being a consideration in pay. I brought it up when our, our former manager was here, didn't get much traction at the time. I think we've done well, even if progress has been slower than a lot would have preferred, where we are now. Closer to coming to a conclusion, it's, it's a matter of, I guess, getting the wrinkles out and then looking at the dollars, there's a lot of, lot of considerations. As recently as Monday, I can tell you the time in service was not going to be a consideration. I mean, I'm going to put it out there. It really wasn't. So we've gone from not being a consideration to 50%. And I know some folks would like 60, 70, or 100%, but I think, in my personal opinion, 50% for your pay grade and 50% time in service. And as the manager alluded to, it's a matter of where that's going to place you, your initial... And as the manager alluded to, it's a matter of where that's going to place you, your initial placing on that chart. And having not looked at it, to Councilman Fossett's point, I think possibly reworking the pay schedules and inputting that formula, that fifty fifty formula and see where we land in each one of those classifications. And see where that places us in, in regards to market value will give council a much better idea as to where we are. And that's before we start talking about numbers. But strictly from a competitive standpoint, take that fifty fifty formula, we know what it's going to be if it's seventy. Take that fifty fifty formula and plug it in there. Now, keep in mind, whatever it is, I think number two on your considerations is affordable and sustainable. Affordable and sustainable, now what is that? It means we're going to continue to pay it every year unless you put a freeze on it. And yes, this year will be a good year. But if anybody in their right mind thinks that property values are going to continue to escalate like they have forever, it's just not going to happen. I mean, your average house is going to be a million dollars if we head in this direction ten years from now. So realistically, we may not be fortunate and probably will not be fortunate to have the type of, I wouldn't really call it a windfall, but our revenues have exceeded what we've budgeted for. So the worst thing we can do is implement something that we can't carry out in the long run. All of our employees are important, every single one of them, and they should be compensated as such. And I assume in our compensation study, it gives us an idea of market value. So we're not in a, we don't necessarily have to say, we'll put everybody into a step plan to get our other employees paid some more money and then work them in. And this is just, this is just me talking. To try to switch an entire workforce over to another way of, of being paid, I just think is a huge movement all at one time. No other city has done that yet, none. None, zero. There's got to be a reason for it. My primary concern is public safety. And primarily, and I don't have anything, you know, believe me, and it, our police department needs to be compensated for what their job entails nowadays. Not that the fire department doesn't, but the fire department's job description has remained relatively constant, in my opinion. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't be compensated, do not take this the wrong way. I just think that when you look back at what has evolved with the police department over the last five years and ten years and what their job description is and primarily what they're expected to do way outside your job description, way outside your job description. They're going to be social workers, they're going to take people to hospitals, they've got to make, I mean, they're dodging bullets. It's a different world out there, and a lot of it without the support of the, of some of the citizens like it used to be. So that's just the reality of it. Being pragmatic, that is the reality of it. When we look at retention rates and look at your turnover rates, when I looked at a sheet, had all the fire department employees, and I look at a sheet that had all the police department employees, you got forty-four, forty-five, forty-six firefighters with over twenty years. When I'm looking at the police department, they all got one year, three years. I mean, it's, obviously, the issue is with the, the primary issue is with the police department. And a step plan for the police department and a step plan for the fire department, because the fire department and the police department, and I kind of equate it to the military, you know, you should be rewarded for taking that promotion. Because in those departments, you are promoted based on your supervisory, not only your skills, you're skilled to a point. But once you reach a point, then you get compensated for being a supervisor, for being responsible, for managing your troops. That's what you get paid the money for. And that's in grades. So if it's a matter of balancing the scale, because you can always balance the scale, it's kind of like your real estate taxes. Your taxes can be higher and your assessment can be lower. Your assessment can be higher and your taxes are lower. And it's going to come out to the same thing. So the key in this fifty fifty scenario, and I want to commend the city manager for moving in that direction, them and HR, because that was a move for them. And it may not be exactly everything that everybody wants, but I think it'll get us in the right direction. And I think, you know, to the Vice Mayor's point, Councilman Fossett's point, maybe when we get all this laid out, take those in there and let's plug those numbers in with what we got in, kind of see, ensure that we are in market value. I'm looking to, if we don't do a step plan for everybody right from jump, and to me, by your admission, we look back at the other thing and it had the progress and it said general employees, and the study was in process, didn't say completed, it said in process, or received and under review. So it's hard to spend millions and millions and millions of dollars when things are still in process. So we could possibly implement a step plan next year, you know, start with public safety, public works, public utilities, and then go ahead and go from there. We need to compensate our nine one one operators accordingly. I think we should be number one in Hampton Roads as far as salaries concerned, because when you look at those salaries, they do not get compensated. I mean, I think they start off at thirty-four thousand dollars. We need to lead the region with our nine one one operators. They are the first communication our citizens have to get to those lifesaving services, to get to the fire department, to get to the police department. They're the ones that are responsible for unscrambling all that. And they're also in short supply. So while I definitely support the step plan, I support it for fire and safety right now, and then ensure the rest of our employees are compensating, are compensated also for the work that they put in. And then, once we get the wrinkles out of the step plan with the police department, fire and rescue, and then go ahead and move it through the rest of our employees, we're talking about eight point eight million dollars. Eight point eight million dollars. We just had a discussion this, this evening as to whether we, how many twenty-five hundred dollar flock cameras we could put up. I mean, we're arguing about twenty-five hundred dollar cameras to put up in neighborhoods to try to keep people safe, but we're going to spend eight point eight million dollars? Let's kind of put things in perspective. We want our employees to be compensated. We want to be able to attract and retain employees. A step plan will do that. No one else has that with the exception of Chesapeake. That, and we need to create, we have created, we need to continue to create a work environment that folks can't get someplace else. Money is always something, but it is never everything. And I think we offer a good work environment. I really do. You've got a city manager that's, that's more than concerned about his employees than I think he is himself. We have a fire chief, we got a police department, I mean, these, I think we appreciate our employees. And we need to know that they're appreciated, but we also have a responsibility, we have a fiscal responsibility, not that to do, do what's easy. It's like I told somebody the other day, I mean, we were talking about it, and I said, man, I can just vote for whatever. I mean, if it costs twenty million dollars, okay, that's me, I'm going to be out of here in a couple of years anyhow. They can blame it on me later. I'll never see what the consequences are ten years from now of figuring an eighty-five percent retention rate and what this payroll is going to look like ten years from now. Because it's a two-edged sword. We want to promote retention, but as we promote retention, everybody's moving up a step in the world. I mean, Suffolk's are great, nobody ever leaves. And that's not a bad thing, but what's it going to look like ten years from now? What's it going to look like fifteen years from now? So there's a lot of considerations, but I am not built that way. I'm not going to say, okay, let's do it, make it, everybody be happy, let's go ahead and spend eleven, twelve million, fifteen million, let's do whatever we need to do, everybody's happy and off we go. I think we need to be realistic and fiscally responsible with whatever it is that we approve. Understanding that, yes, our employees need to be rewarded for their hard work. I know public utilities and, and public works, they've been, they've been working overtime, they're working in the snow, our police department, our fire department's there on call all the time. And they need to be rewarded for their efforts. Our citizens depend on them. But it's going to be a really, I mean, it's going to be a Debbie Downer, you know, three years from now, if we do something, so, oh, by the way, we're going to freeze all the step plans, because we can't fund it. We really wanted to, guys. But you know, that little ten million dollar windfall that we had a couple of years ago, we don't have squat this year. So to give you a raise, then we've got to come back to this dius and we have to raise taxes again on our citizens. So there's a balance there. I mean, we're going to be reasonable with what we do. Everybody can't have everything. And we have to be cognizant of not creating an issue that's going to fall on the backs of our taxpayers. So with that being said, I don't really know where we are right now or what direction to look at, but I would like to see you come back with that scenario for us to figure out, either with all the employees, without the employees. We've got to take benefits into consideration. Benefits went up eight percent, they'll probably go up against some more this year. So who's going to pick up that tab? If we're figuring the same increase from last year, if it's more than that, then who's going to pick up that tab? So we're talking about a lot of money. Councilman Fossett.
Just as a last minute food for thought, recently, we hired eighteen new firefighters and three point three million dollars was, it was put into play, it's not costing the city a dime. That money is going into cover their salaries, we're not going to have to pay this year or probably the next year. I don't know the exact how far out that three point three is going to go for those eighteen, but there again, it's a three year.
I believe.
So here we are, three years with that, take that off the table. And what we discussed as a group is not what I'm hearing in this plan. It's not what I'm hearing in this plan that you proposed, and I'm not hearing all of it that we should have heard tonight. I'm going to stick on that seventy percent until the cows come home. I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with taking the process, as the mayor has said, and concentrating on your public safety. Of course, your nine one one dispatches ought to be a part of public safety. If we haven't got them classified in there, then we're behind the eight ball. We got, we're supposed to have twenty-six dispatches, we have seven. Does that shell shock somebody in the room? Seven. That's the last count I heard. So we got, we got to spin the wheels here and do something. We asked to implement this plan, a pay plan for at least public safety by the end of March to put in their paychecks. That's what was agreed on in that room. You gave it to us, you would be in there, it's the last paycheck.
It was the second check in April.
Okay, I'm corrected, April then. So if we're not even close, how are we going to get there? I mean, that's all I'm asking, is we're not there yet. We need to look at it. If we want to chunk out public safety and do them, and then phase the other employees in, I'm cool with that. I mean, we can go there if it's, if we can afford to go that way. They're going to get it, but these guys are so far behind in their pay. It's pathetic. I mean, there's lieutenants that were put in that have been in there over ten years that are underpaid, of people that are coming in the department that have less than five years that are making more money than the person that's been there ten years. How do you, how do you figure that? That's because they came in at a lower pay at the time, they never caught up, their pay raises haven't been there. So, you know, you can, there's already a disparity right there. If you don't catch them up, and don't take for a minute, and I'll discount what the mayor said about people, let me tell you something. People's, people are creatures of nature. If another city is recruiting and is going to pay more money, let me tell you something. People go where they can make money because they're going to want to feed their families, they're going to want to pay their bills, and they're going to want to see the retirement at the end of the line. Don't ever believe that people won't go if these other cities start chunking money up and putting bonuses in. They're gone because they already got certified, there's nothing holding them back. That's what happens in the police department. They come in here to get certified, they're here for a couple of years, and they go somewhere else. Where, how many police officers are there, we show, thirty-five, forty?
I think it's in the thirties.
Huh?
It's in the thirties.
Thirties?
I believe.
Okay, that's pretty bad. Thirties. I mean, it's difficult for, for the department to cover the land out here at night. Some cases, you only have four, five, six cars in the whole entire city because you don't have police officers. We got a real problem here we need to fix, and yeah, it's going to cost some money. But if we tighten our belt up a little bit, we can get these guys close. We can get them close. Police, fire, sheriffs and dispatches. That's the main cog here. Seventy percent value, and I give you a deal, we move on. And we can afford to do it. We can afford to do it.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief on this one. I just want to ask you, we have talked about some departments, but I know public works, we have not talked at all about them. And I know that they have been very shorthanded, and they have been working overtime and keeping the streets clean and ice off the streets and keeping everything going. How far are they down the line before they steadily will be a part of this?
Well, we had hoped to implement everything together.
Okay.
Staff and I. Because I feel the value, you know, and I appreciate all the words said for public safety, and police are short, we got to take care of them, dispatch. But public works and public utilities and some of our other employees are valued too. And we need to address those issues. And I didn't want to create a situation of have and have nots. And that's been my whole program here. So I would hope, we were hoping that we could implement everyone together. When you start, when, the concern that staff has expressed to me when we're working on this, is when you start, you know, you have two different pay systems. And you get a year down the road, are you going to be able to treat everyone fairly? This group, because they're set up differently, gets something different than this group. And then someone feels that way. So we were trying to balance everything. But we, you know, our intention is to bring everyone on at one time. And we were hoping to be able to do that. Now, what I would suggest to council, if you could consider, we had one-on-ones or two-on-ones meetings before. If we continue that effort and work through this, hopefully over the next couple of weeks that we can still stay on some close schedule to where we were, I'd greatly appreciate it if we could do that.
Well, that's some of my concerns, Mr. Manager, is that you're saying that you're going to be ready to implement this in April. And I don't see how, if we're going back to, to the drawing board and look at all this over again, to be able to get this implemented for everyone in April. It just doesn't seem feasible.
The longer that we're not moving ahead with methodology, the longer it impacts our schedule. We need to be able to cite the folks in the frameworks. Get, and of course, we're balancing out and scrubbing the data on the general population right now.
Okay.
So, you know, that's why I recommend that we move ahead with two-on, two meetings again, so we can get some solid direction. So we try not to lose any more time. Police are waiting. They're waiting to see where we go. Chesapeake's implemented. The beach is hiring. We got a lot of folks there awaiting. And then we got a lot of folks on the other front lines that are waiting.
And see, that's my concern is, you got all these other jobs that's opening up, and people is not getting paid the equal pay that they can go. We have some people probably working in public works making eleven dollars, twelve dollars an hour. They can go there to Amazon, start at fifteen dollars an hour. So, I mean, you have to look at that, not, we're competing with Amazon, but you still have to look at some of the people with the salaries that they're at to try to keep them as well, because we're losing them as well, I'm being told. well, I'm being told. I'm just sad to let you know that. It's a, it's a thin line there, when it comes to that. I hope we can go ahead immediately, and do the two and one, so that we can try to come to a conclusion on this, not later, but sooner than later, so we can try to keep this thing going.
We'll start setting up those meetings tomorrow, if we can, look at your schedules.
Councilman Gobert.
I know next week, we have direct reports, it might be an opportunity time to maybe combine some of those and spend some time.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I definitely think we ought to move ahead with those meetings quickly as possible. I really want to see the numbers for the 70, 70% to see where we are on that. And I understand your concern about bringing everyone on, I agree with that philosophy and Councilman Williams' thoughts on that. I think we need to look after a lot. We have a lot of departments here that are lacking with people, and that people come down for services and can't get services committed over a period of time. We have shortened, trying to get things committed, and it takes six, eight weeks to get answers back and things, and we need more people. People overworked and what have you, and I think we need to move ahead with that. So I agree completely. Let's get together, let's do it, let's move ahead with it, get the numbers down, and let's move ahead, because I think, I think 70% is the number, and I think that's where we ought to be. Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Yes, I agree with my fellow council members. Again, I think the 70% is where it should be. Also, to implement this step plan with everyone, in my opinion, is the right approach, because can you imagine trash in front of your house, nobody moving it? So everybody is important, and I applaud you, City Manager, for trying to implement this thing with everyone included.
Okay, I'll just add a couple of things here. I mean, as I mentioned, everybody's important, there's no doubt about it. And we're talking about compensation, and you're talking about a step plan, you're not talking about the amount of compensation, you're talking about the methodology that you're using to arrive at that compensation. So whether Public Utilities is on a step plan next six months, or not next six months, doesn't necessarily have any effect on their pay, because we can increase the pay, or accordingly to be at market value. The step plan is a methodology going down the road. It is, it is your future. It is, it is more of a planned future than anything else. And it affects the reason that, well, like I said, no locality has implemented it everywhere, and the only locality that has done it so far has been Chesapeake, and they started with public safety. And then they're going to go ahead and work on the remainder of the workforce. I agree, public safety, we need a decision, I can vote on that in two minutes, I'm ready to vote on that right now. Public safety needs to be addressed. Our law enforcement officers need to be able to say, okay, we have accomplished something, it's done, this is what I've got to look, this is what I've got to look forward to. It is an immediate, much more an immediate need than some of the other departments. Not that they're not important, not that we don't appreciate what they're doing. But that is where the number one issue is right now, is the Police Department and dispatch. We have to get that corrected, and we have to do it sooner than later. The Fire Department, while their retention level was excellent, they still need a step plan so they can have a career path. And that's the difference in a lot of the other departments, is when you have anything that has ranks, there's constantly, there's, there are so many different promotions to start from a, you know, basic firefighter to a police chief, there's probably 12, I don't know how many steps in between, and whether you're a master, whether you're this or that, there's a lot of different progression, much more so than it is, you know, with some of the other departments. And that's why it's so important, because those are positions that not only, as I mentioned before, they not only require skill, but as you move up, they require an ability to manage and responsibility over individuals, more and more as you move up the command chain. Because whoever's in command, like they taught us a long time ago, the commander's responsible for everybody that he's got underneath of him, everybody. And so you need to be rewarded for that responsibility. So I think at this point, just based on the conversation, to get the manager to come back, I can tell you what I want to see. I want to see what this thing looks like at 70%. Well, there's actually four different scenarios. 70% and everybody gets to play in the step plan. Then there's 50% and everybody gets to play in the step plan. Then there's 50% for public safety, and something else for the rest of the employees, and then the, well, there's not a fourth scenario. The fourth scenario is we do nothing, and that's not going to happen. So the worst-case scenario, the minimum that I think everybody wants to see is at least you're 50/50, in how everybody is placed on that chart, and then what their cost would be. Somebody's got to put a pencil to you, shake your head all you want. If it's 11 or 12 million dollars, or 13 million dollars, or 14 million dollars, I mean, unlike the federal government, we do not get to print money. We need to ensure that our employees are competitive, and it does address the compression issues. And if it's obvious that it doesn't, then we're going to have to change something. Because we're, as the Councilman Fawcett said, we're defeating the purpose if we can't at least fix what we're trying to fix. But we just have to balance what the cost is going to be. And I don't think we've done that. We don't have the numbers on the general population. I mean, it just said, right, I say general population, everyone other than public safety. Those numbers aren't back yet. So I mean, we're just kind of spitballing there with a few million dollars, where we're going to assume that, you know, if this one's that much, this one's that much, it'll probably be a couple of million. I got a little problem with that. I would like to know what it is, because once we implement it, I don't want to be the one to take it away. I'll bet you all, I don't want to take stuff away. I want to put something into place that's sustainable. I want to put something in place that our employees can count on. I want to bring our employees to market value. I do want a step plan where time and service is a consideration. And like I said, as of this, as of last Monday, time and service wasn't going to be a consideration. And I applaud the City Manager and the staff for getting to the point where they are now, because the philosophy was different. And that's what it is, it's, we're looking at compensation, and we're assuming that if we don't do this, nobody gets paid. That's not the case. It is a methodology. That's all it is. It's a formula, as to how we're going to get there, and what emphasis you want to put on whether it's time and grade, time and service, how, you know, the market study's supposed to show, you know, and what demand those jobs are. All that should be taken into consideration. So my way of thinking is for everybody up here to be able to make an intelligent decision, or have a better decision, would be to look at those different scenarios. A 70% scenario, and everybody gets to play in a step plan, 70% scenario, and it's only public safety, and then a 50% with both scenarios, and let's see what a number is. Let's look at it, and let's see what the ultimate end results are. And there are a few instances, because I know when we talk Monday, you know, you're going to find a few things, well, maybe there's a lieutenant there, and a captain there, you know, you're going to have to make some adjustments to ensure that everybody's competitive in the market. There's nothing that says we got to go zoom right through the line. There's, there's going to be some anomalies in there, I'm sure. So we can, you can address those also, where in those few positions, one has kind of created a compression issue. So adjust the salary numbers, and adjust the, the first numbers. It can be done, without going crazy, and like I said, I do not want to put in a position where I say, I'm sorry, we can't do it two years from now. I'll still be here for two years from now. Yeah, two. I'll be here two and some change, if I'm doing the math right. So I don't want to be here two and some change from now, say, I'm sorry, we're going to put a freeze on it. So that's what I'd like to see, and then we can come back and talk about it.
For some clarity, to make sure, got this right, we're talking about 70% on longevity, with a 25, with a 2.5% COLA, right?
If, is that where we were, we were at 70%? I mean, I'm not a 70% person, so...
Well, well, the 70% had a 2.5 COLA on it, too.
Okay, if that's what it was, versus a 50%?
Well, the one I saw.
Right, we already did the 2.5, right?
Yeah, and then they, then they...
Okay, so do the one 2.5 for everybody.
Okay, and we would do the same on the 50/50 on the same scenario.
Do a 70%, do a 50%, right. So we can look at it and see what it actually is.
And, and we can, we can do a third, that may be a little bit less than 70, if it's desirable.
I mean, I got no problem with the 50. I just want to see, I want to see where your 50% is going to place everybody in the market. What is the end result? At 50%, where does that put them on the grid? And what's it going to cost us? And if we do 70%, and everybody gets to play in a step plan, and it costs us $12 million, it's probably not going to happen. You know, and we have to remember that just because we had a good year last year does not mean we're going to have a good year the year after. Real estate values are not going to continue to go up at the rate that they have, it's not sustainable. Our taxpayers won't be able to pay the taxes on the house. I mean, I pay more in personal property tax on my house than my whole house payment used to be, on real estate tax. You know, when I moved into my house, it was a couple of years ago, I mean, a few years ago, you know, my entire house payment, insurance, taxes and everything, it's not as much as I'm paying taxes right now. So while things are looking really, really good, you know, I don't think we can depend on that. Councilman Johnson.
Al, will you have time, too, to put together the other employees, as far as the Public Works employees and that not, so that can be presented as part of this plan? You'll have enough information in to go ahead and bring, bring them up to market as well, as my...
I'm hoping that we would be in, hopefully in position. I can't guarantee it this morning, I got to talk to staff. We got the data back, we are supposed to get some data back this afternoon, and I haven't had a chance to talk to them since that moment, but if it's possible, we will do it.
Because as we've said...
And I will advise you where we're at.
Right, Public Works people, all the others that are below the spectrum right now, we really need to make sure they understand that we're, where we're coming from.
Yeah, I mean, it's our goal, it was our goal to bring everybody...
I think the more information we have, the better we'll be able to tie this thing down pretty quick.
And I'll just add one more comment, we got to get this thing done.
Yes.
Okay.
I second the motion.
You second the motion to get it done? Okay, we got a motion and a second, I can't make a motion, I need somebody else to second the motion, get it done. Okay, does anyone else have any other comments, Mr. Manager? You okay?
I'm okay.
All right, well, we're going to move to motions then. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on February 16, 2022, to receive public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2023/2032 capital improvements program and plan. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
So move.
Councilman Fawcett?
Second.
We have a motion for approval in a second, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Uh, we have, next, we have a motion to schedule a public hearing on February 16, 2022, to consider the adoption of an ordinance authorizing lease of certain real property located at Lone Star Lakes, identified as tract 3082, for a period not to exceed five years, and understand that Councilperson Butler Barlow has a statement before this motion is considered.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have a conflict of interest in this particular issue, and will not participate in any discussion on this matter.
All right, thank you. Okay, a motion would be in order. Pleasure, Council? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Abstaining.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved, is by seven to zero, and one, with Councilmember Butler Barlow abstaining.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, February 16, 2022, at 4:00 PM unless canceled, and the motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Bennett?
So move.
Councilman Goldberg?
Second.
We have a motion for approval in a second, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to non-agenda speakers, Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time? If so, please read the guidelines.
Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer, and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is David Folkerson, 100 Massey Drive, representing South regarding current events.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice, Vice Mayor and Council. What I am going to talk about here today is the Health, Health Department. I do not agree with what the Health Department is putting out information. And not only do I not agree with it, the University of London, the University of John Hopkins, and the Cleveland Clinic. Okay? Basically, they have done a study over the last two and a half years of basically 125,000 people. 90% of, were required to wear the mask everywhere they go, no matter what they do, only was allowed to take it off while they eat, drink, or sleep. And what they come up with is that no matter where they wore the mask, or they got the two shots, 90% of the people were getting the viruses. Okay? And they also had a study with the children. And the children, 85% of them was wearing the mask also, and they were still getting the viruses. What they recommend is that children do not wear masks because of they were getting symptoms of anxiety, depression, and a hard time hearing. So I believe it is time to realize that you got to sit down with the school board, especially with, especially with the superintendent. Okay? My grandson went to school, he had a cough and a sneeze. The superintendent sent him home with 10-day suspension. That, that's not right. And besides that, his sister was allowed to go to school every day. So what is wrong with that picture? So you got to ask yourself, it is time to realize that the pandemic is over with, because the study shows, the regular COVID is gone, Delta is gone, the only thing that's around right now is what they call the Obercon. And really, what the, when people get sick with the Obercon, what do they get? They get a runny nose, a cough, a sneeze. Guess what? That's the flu. Why don't they name it properly? It is time to get over this. So I think it's time that you sit down with your superintendent, and find out what he is doing wrong. I feel that he does not deserve to be in the situ, in the position that he's in, because he does not care about the children. Forcing them to wear masks every day. It's, children are not, we're, we're making them sick. We are. And it's, it's time to wake up, and what we want to say is smell the roses. I see, right now, he's not wearing a mask. You're, Mayor, you're not wearing a mask, okay? Is there a reason why you're not wearing a mask? Yeah, there's a reason, because you, you don't like to be cooped up wearing a mask. So please, get together and come up with a game plan to take care of our children that are in school. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville. the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
Good evening. I'm here to speak again on Pewsville. Some interesting things have happened just this week, but first of all, I want to speak from January fifth. We talked with Vice Mayor. I'm giving you accolades right now, Mayor. I'm not going to wait until you dead and gone, okay? I just want to say that the mayor came January fifth meeting, and he apologized for Pewsville, for the things that have gone wrong from this city council. We publicly accept your apology. He see the things that are going wrong. A lot of things are going wrong, and nobody's trying to make corrections. Nobody's voting. Everybody's siding with each other, just like we just saw. If the city manager done the best he can with his staff, and then you all turn it down. Where's your faith? If you can take seven million dollars and put down one street, you say, and one retention pawn, and take two people's houses away, and I hope you all got the information that I sent, the picture of another house that somebody's getting ready to tear it out on a paper street, because you're not paying attention. Vice Mayor Bennett, you wrote down those numbers. You said four point two. That's what you said in the meeting. Stand up! Stand on your word. That's what you got to do. You men, stand on your word. I know my woman's going to stand, because the ladies are taking over, because you men are getting afraid, and there's nothing to be afraid of. If you have faith, stand on your faith. Now, you saw the picture. You saw the paper street. So this time, when the new house comes up, you all will know that a brand-new house will be built on a paper street. And also, this week, we just got that note telling us to move our cars off the street. You come on Monday, the thirty-first, and tell us from February first to February fifth, we're going to pave your streets. Then the men say they're going to pave John Street. Well, all the commotion from John Street with Suffolk and Chesapeake can't get themselves together again, that he said he's going to take seven million dollars to tear up this street, didn't want to pave it. You're spending money foolishly. Wake up, Suffolk, before everybody walk out the door. You won't have any employees. Yes, Chesapeake is doing the right thing. They're stepping out on faith, and the money comes. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Pamela Brandy, fifty-sixteen Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
Hello, City Council. I'm back again. Appreciate the fact that you got my address right. I am a Chesapeake resident and not Suffolk. Piggybacking off of what Carolyn just said and everything, we thank you for those that are correcting themselves and standing up and stating what they say for Pewsville. I also like to say, Vice Mayor Bennett, thank you for your stepping up and correcting things for Pewsville as well. And I also like to put the rest, the statement that has been said about who's that lady? My Father Jesus says my name has no power. He has power. So it's not about what I do, it's about what my Father do. And as I say, I only speak and do what my Father say do, because I am a lover, a believer, and a follower of Jesus Christ. However, when we come down to the maps, and I see what you have out there in the space way people see, one of the things that came up was the fact that we wanted to see the streets and exactly what streets were included in. I am a Chesapeake resident who lives in Pewsville, right along with Suffolk residents that live in Pewsville. I cannot vote twice. Your maps want to talk to the voters' registration for folks and stuff. They say they get the map from you all. I pulled off the internet, your website, stating exactly, Councilman Lou Roy, this is the map off of your website that says all of Pewsville, which includes me, lives in Suffolk. I can't vote twice. Then we have Councilman Fawcett, his map off of the internet, and also Vice Mayor Bennett map off of your website. Pewsville is split three ways, Father, Son, and the Holy Ghost. Y'all might want to check out their maps. Those maps are not correct, and the maps is needed to be corrected not only in Suffolk with B dot, because residents make the decision on who they can vote for. I can't vote twice. Also, I see that you spoke a lot about Chesapeake, and y'all piggybacking off of Chesapeake. Chesapeake have opened up COVIDs, have did some work in Pewsville. The work that you all are doing on the streets, how about let's do the COVIDs? Because the streets is not what's causing the flooding. It is the COVIDs that are backed up that you all have not opened up. Also, when you look at what's going on in Pewsville and everything, you blocking people out, you did not pay attention or even give residence, because we have a lot of elderly and disabled people that's in the neighborhood that cannot get in and out, because you all decided to do something all of a sudden. And again, just like November thirtieth, when you had a public meeting, you took over things, but then again, you don't allow the, the public to really have their voice to be heard, and then you only put out what you want to put out. When it comes down to speaking about all the workers, well, guess what? Everybody's work has increased. Back in the day, a garbage truck person used to have four people, two driving in the front and two on the back of the truck picking up truck. Now it's down to two people. Even the house cleaning people, everybody has, work has increased. Everybody is important. So let's think about this for a moment. All this rapid increase of buildings and developments in all the seventy-five cities and everything, if you stop about the increase of these buildings and developments and talk about the people, because it was only seven percent that had the villagers and neighborhoods, but yet, where are you getting the money at when you have a problem with something? You always tax us, and then we have to pay out more taxes and everything across the board. But where's the money going at when there's late fees and people that can't pay on time and everything? Where's that money actually going at? Okay? And then you might want to consider that, you know, some of the ones that are making all these decisions, you might want to take a decrease in your pay, so everybody can come up together. Because no matter who's on the bottom talking pole, everybody is trying to take care of their family and support their family. And when you're given all these rapid buildings and stuff and all these homes, the prices is up, and who going to be able to live in it? Okay? Something going to have to give. And right now, it is the rapid development that you're doing, and then the money that you keep stealing from Peter DePay Paul, and you're not showing the public all the true statements, you need to reconsider, considerate what's going on in your communities and the livelihoods of people to be able to take care of everything that they need.
That concludes the time allocated, Mayor.
Thank you, and y'all be blessed.
Our next speaker is Garrett Waters, one oh five Babtown Road, representing self regarding current events.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. My name is Garrett Waters. I reside at one oh five Babtown Road. Just a little bit of background about me. I've studied communicable disease for a little bit over two decades. I found it pretty interesting when Dr. Wells was in here talking earlier this evening, and she, she made a couple of statements, and I just want to expound on a couple of those statements. She's quoted as saying, and you guys will be able to review the film later of this meeting, that viruses make mistakes, and that a variant is a mistake of the virus. These were actual words that came out of Dr. Wells' mouth, that a variant is a mistake of the virus. I can categorically tell you that is an incorrect statement. What viruses do is they continue to evolve. They continue to morph. They continue to modify. A virus needs something living in order to sustain itself. If that living being comes up with a defense mechanism to stop that particular virus, that particular virus will try to find a way to survive. It's not a mistake. It's actually quite on purpose. Dr. Wells also stated, if you stop the replication, you stop the virus. That was her exact words. You stop the replication, you stop the virus. Here's my question. How do you stop the replication of the spike protein cells that one would receive after getting this experimental vaccine injected into your body? Apparently, vaccination will not stop the replication, as she had stated earlier. If that was the case, we'd already be out of all of this craziness. Councilmen, Councilmen earlier this evening had mentioned thread count in their comments, yet they wouldn't ask the same question that I've asked for you folks to ask them when they come before you. As luck would have it, we're practicing social distancing here, so there's, I don't even know, fifteen, twenty folks maybe total, but in the lobby, where there's no social distancing whatsoever, no green tape, there's about fifty or sixty people out there. So when Dr. Wells came out, I asked her the question. I asked her what the minimum thread count of that masked bandana household cloth needs to be in order to mitigate the spread of COVID, and I got plenty of witnesses out there who can attest. Her answer to me, as she looked at the ground, was that there was a study done, but I don't recall the name. It's only a layer. This is just part of the mitigation, but she couldn't give me the count. But yet, folks are still wearing masks. She went on to say that the vaccination obviously can end the variant. However, no vaccine available has even given out any statistical data to stop the variant, and let's not lose sight of the fact that Omicron has caused one death in the United States. One. Dr. Wells also talked about the reduction of medical screening for diseases such as cancer, et cetera, and that's why we'll see a rise in cancers. Well, if you've been listening to what I've been saying as I've been coming before you, these vaccines that are offered to prevent COVID actually cause cancers, and you're able to go and research all of it and see it. In August of twenty twenty-one, Dr. Ryan Cole, an American pathologist, described an increase in certain cancers, such as endometrial cancer and uterine cancer as a couple of examples. German pathologists have also noted the problem post-vaccination to immune dysregulation and sudden tumor growths in their patients. I went on the V D H website earlier today. Suffolk has fifty-nine new cases, one death. That's the seven-day average for Suffolk, one death. Hospitalizations negative one. You can go on the V D H website. It's right there. Level of community transmission. So on this website, there's a tab you can click for level of community transmission. Western Tidewater and Suffolk are actually not even listed on the Virginia Department of Health website to figure out what the community transmission is. But I can tell you, Suffolk population a little over ninety-four thousand people. The amount of new cases we have is point oh six percent. Point oh six percent. A hundred and sixty-five deaths were added, added to the Virginia Department of Health data dashboard for Virginia residents who died outside of the state of Virginia. So if you were one of these one sixty-five folks who happened to be from Virginia and died in, say, California or Vermont or wherever, they attribute your COVID death in that other state to Virginia numbers. That's not how you do it. That's kind of like saying a DUI, you know, in Connecticut is attributed to Suffolk numbers. You just, you don't compare it like that.
The time has expired, Mayor.
Fund the police. Thank you.
Next speaker is Willie Barnes, seven oh four Brook Avenue, representing self regarding the city's compensation study.
Good evening, Council. We appreciate the opportunity to have our voice here on behalf of some employees there out in, in the foyer there. And we, what we're asking is, when it comes down to the compensation study, we want to be, we want to, we want to be truly considered and reviewed fairly, and we're facing some unusual circumstances with keeping staff, as y'all have talked earlier before, and our hiring processes, and even our staff that we have there, they are going to more competitive places that, that pay a higher pay scale, and it's bringing some burden on us to, with the employees that are remaining, to have to work over and have to do a little extra. We have to maneuver things to meet our objectives. And when it comes to that, we, when it comes to the study, I hope that you all come to the agreeance that whether it's seventy or whether it's the fifty-fifty or whatever, and to include public utilities too, and to really look at it, because we don't, we don't have, we don't come with a blinking light or red light or a siren, but we're not first responders, but we're urgent responders. And when something is happening, we're, we're pretty Johnny on the spot for those things that, to keep the city operating under a safe and comparable mechanism. So when it comes to that, I want to ask you all to really consider whether it's the fifty or whether it's seventy or the longevity. We've listened out in the foyer at everything that was there, but we'll see it, but in the end of it, it's hard to, it's hard to, we have, we have people to apply for positions, and when they apply for the positions, and then we, they see what we're actually playing, and they, they walk away, or we're sitting there for interviews, and there's no show, and it's, all goes back to the salary of what everybody's saying. And then we have people that are there that are venturing out, and they're hearing everywhere else that, I think Councilman Bennett said something about the Amazon and what the pay was, and, and even if we are able to promote them, they still don't meet that criteria. So I ask you all, that when you do your voting, please make sure you consider public utilities, and thank you for allowing me this time. All right?
Our final speaker this evening is Carl Marshall, twenty-four forty-six Meadows Landing, representing Public Works regarding the city's compensation study.
Good evening, Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Bennett, Most Honorable City Council, Most Honorable City Manager. My name is Reverend Carl Marshall, Senior, and I'm blessed to be the Assistant Director of Public Works Operations for this great city of Suffolk, and it's my duty and my responsibility and privilege to speak to you on behalf of what I deem the most faithful, enthusiastic, resourceful, and quite simply the best group of Public Works employees in the Commonwealth of Virginia. When the discussion of a compensation study began, I implored... When the discussion of a compensation study began, our employees began buzzing about the possibility of an increase. Yet that enthusiastic chatter is beginning to change into frustration and the mindset of the typical Public Works employee wonders if we even matter. In the year 2022, according to payscale.com, the average salary in Suffolk, Virginia is $15.65 per hour. Yet, we have refuse workers for the city of Suffolk working diligently and faithfully for $11.91 an hour. This is not acceptable. We have street maintenance workers who work faithfully for the salary of $13 an hour, and I can stand before you proudly and state, while we may be delayed from time to time, and that's by no fault of our own, no services, I repeat, no services from Public Works go lacking each day for the city. As an Assistant Department Head, I'm challenged each day with the task of making sure refuges pick up, potholes are repaired, drainage is functioning properly, along with other tasks that some feel are menial, such as removing dead animals from the roadway. Yet each day, these tasks become more arduous in nature as we lose city employees to what at one time was not even a competitor to us. We're losing employees to the warehouses that are moving into the city, and construction companies who find it in their budgets to compensate their employees with a fair and equitable wage. For two consecutive weekends, we were confronted with snow on our travel ways. Yet, the public workforces who stand before you today left their families and cleared the roadways and made them possible for our brothers and sisters who are firefighters and police officers to be able to travel to any emergency that the citizens of this great city may have faced. As I previously stated, we're losing employees. As such, this sometimes puts us in a burdensome and demanding situation in which we have to make sure the trash that the citizens place at their driveways get picked up on the proper day. I've had to stop our roadway employees from their designated duties and transition them from, to refuse to accomplish that task, and they do so without murmuring or complaining. They just step up when I call and get the job done. On New Year's Eve, it was a designated holiday, yet our roadway employees volunteered to give up their holiday to assist refuse with trash removal. This is the type of dedication that stands before you tonight. I would like you to know from a more in-depth perspective the challenges that we face. In our refuse department, we are currently down four operator positions, two refuse workers who work on the back of the truck, and one field supervisor who we had to pull someone off of a vehicle to perform that task because of its importance. We start most days at a disadvantage where our refuse routes are concerned, more if we have people who call in and cannot make it. Yesterday alone, we had eight callouts plus the seven positions that we have open, so we started out 15 people down, and we find ourselves pushing the people who make the least, $11.91 an hour, the hardest. Public Works is not asking for special treatment. Public Works just wants to be treated in a fair and equitable manner. On the roadway side, we're down 34 positions, 19 street maintenance workers, and 15 heavy equipment operators. Again, we cannot keep people. Honorable City Council, the statistics bear out the need for our employees to receive fair financial treatment. According to tradineconomics.com, the annual inflation rate in the United States accelerated to 7% in the last month of 2021. They go further to say gasoline prices are surging, 49.6% versus 58.1%. Inflation accelerated, however, for shelter, 4.1% versus 3.8%, 6.3% versus 6.1%. Finally, I wish to cite, as I've already stated, Public Works employees do not wish to have any special treatment, just fair and equitable treatment. I ask on behalf of all the men and women that stand before you tonight to be, please be fair in your distribution of the compensation study, just as prices have increased for all of you, just as prices have increased for fire, just as prices have increased for police, prices have increased for Public Works as well. I ask you to please make sure you treat us fairly and equit-
The time has expired, Mayor. That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, we'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, the following individuals have been nominated for consideration for appointment to the respective boards and commissions. The Western Tidewater Community Services Board, Melvin M. Lawford; the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, Andrea Anthony Harper; the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Robert C. Wilkins; and the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, Interim Social Services Director, Harry Cromer.
Motion being ordered. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Have a motion for approval in a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Is there any other new business items that require the action of the City Council for consideration? Councilman Johnson?
If Council will just, listen, I've got one thing I'd like to see us get done, and I thought tonight might be a good night, I'm gonna change, change the subject a little bit. I'm gonna read this, because I wrote it up so I wouldn't screw up, so. "A recent study reported in the Virginia Pilot recognized, a recent study reported in the Virginia Pilot recognized Suffolk as the most favorable place to live in the Tidewater area, with the ruralness of our city and our wide-open spaces suggested as to what attracts people here. Those that live here already know this. Newcomers come because they, especially in my borough, they come because they want what we have. A common theme among newcomers is, now that I'm here, control the growth, don't let anybody else in." That's kind of selfish, but. "Single-family homes in my borough, built legally on farms that are allowed three cuts, have fast become many subdivisions. I'd like to propose a review of our process in the agricultural district. It seems to be a practical time for this review as we prepare for the 2040 comp plan. I'd like to better inform, be better informed about our code process as well. With that, I'd like to make a motion to ask staff to provide a report on the subdivision process in the ag district. Additionally, this report should also provide the number of homes approved in the district over the last five years, and this can include what we consider our agricultural regions of the city." I like, we've got a tremendous amount of growth going on right now, and I don't really have a clear picture, and I think it behooves Council to have that clear picture. As well as that, it's more or less a quality of life issue for our city, and I think it's something we need to be aware of. With that, I'd like to propose a motion, as one of our city managers, Vice Assistant City Managers advised me to do.
Could you just clarify the motion itself?
The motion, again, is simply to ask staff to provide a report on the subdivision process in the ag district, additionally, to supply us with the number of homes that have been built in the last two years on individual lots. And then, Kevin said, then we could look into other things as well. I would like to review the code and make sure that we are still doing things adequately and that there's no loopholes that we could, I mean, we need to fill in. That's not the motion.
That's a lot of motion.
I'm just on one motion. The motion is to provide a report on the subdivision process in the ag district. Additionally, this report should also provide the number of homes approved in the ag district over the last, I said five years, but the last two years even would be fine for me. I just want to get a handle on what's being built and where it's being built, and lots of people, I'm, I'm, shut up. I got it.
Okay, Councilman Johnson has made a motion. Madam Clerk, did you get that all right?
Kind of sort of.
Okay, Councilmember Ward.
Second.
We're second. Councilman Ward, any discussion, motion? Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yeah, I just had, maybe add to your motion with doing the study. I was asked sometime back about looking at how we are getting permits to people where the drainage is not properly, the area is not properly drained. I don't know if we have anything on our books now that addresses that, but I would also like to us to be able to have that as a part of, something to look at to be addressed in the near future, and that will help us with some of the areas that have full drainage, like Pewsville and some of the other areas where all these new subdivisions are being built and full drainage. So I don't know what we can do, but I'd like to take a look at that. If that's all right, if I could add on, either I have to make another motion.
I'm not sure how we really add that to Councilman Johnson's motion. It's a whole different can of worms. So I guess we could entertain two motions, let's, if it-
Settle this motion, yeah.
You deal with this first.
Right.
Okay.
That's where I was getting. My suggestion would be to, we have a motion from Councilman Johnson in a second. If Vice Mayor doesn't mind, maybe we vote on that motion, and then you can make your own motion for more new business.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson, a second by Councilman Ward. Is there any discussion of that motion? Councilperson?
I just have a question, Mayor. When you say ag areas to include, okay, does that include villages? Does that include, I'm just, I just want to point a clarification to make sure that we're covering all the areas-
My advisor didn't tell me all of this, okay.
Are you just referring to ag zoning?
I'm, I'm concerned about small, farms mainly that are building homes, they're selling off small plots to build homes, and legally, it seems like some of these three-plot homes are turning into nine-plot homes, and I just want to make sure that our code, and I think that's what we can do with this motion I gave, that we're doing things legitimately and there aren't loopholes that some of these builders are finding. I think we need to be, you know, we need to be more on top of this. And that's considered in that motion. Of course, when they present us with the information, I'm hoping we can do it in a work session where we can actually ask questions. I didn't change the motion.
I was with Fawcett.
I was just curious to what you were just asking, that you've got to take into consideration that some of these that you're asking for may have a byright opportunity to develop on that agricultural land, so you've got to be careful how you want to go with this, because some of that, they can do byright, if I'm not mistaken. So it has a lot of implications on what is approved and what isn't approved based on that piece of property, and how it's zoned, where it's not zoned, could it be, there's a whole lot to it. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, well, I think Councilman Johnson's not looking to circumvent what's allowed, he just wants to clarify and ensure that what is being done is within code. Would that be correct?
And an update to us on the code. I mean, I would like to have a program presented, basically. No, I'm not changing it, I'm just saying, do I, do I need to make-
We got a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Councilman Johnson's motion. If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Discussion?
Is there a purpose for doing this? What's the purpose?
To make sure that we're following the rules, the code, as far as we have it set up, and there's been a lot of discussion lately, I can go on and on, Donnie, but I won't, about how many homes right out into my borough and see, not only does it affect the people that live in the borough, it's going to affect the city with what we're going to be required to do for these homes, and maybe we need to take a look at the way we've got codes set up, and I'm hoping that's what this will lead to, that we can just start a discussion.
I must say, Mayor, I don't see a purpose really and truly. We have a department that oversees this, they stop people all the time from doing things, I just don't see a purpose in it.
Mr. Manager, do you think it would be, we got a motion in a second, I understand, do you think it would be appropriate to address Councilman Johnson's concern at a work session, just to enumerate what the guidelines are now and what's been done?
Yes, we can, we can do that.
I mean, and I can ensure that it's, that it's on a work session.
If that be the case.
When we set the agenda, if you will send me that request, or send that request to the manager, then we can get it on to a work session, and that sounds like more what you're looking for is-
It is, but I think it's just that we need to know how many of these homes have been, we know, we know how many subdivisions we have, we know what's being built in them, but these single-family homes built in the rural areas of the city, we don't have a clue. At least I don't, and I'd like to know that. And so I can take my motion back if, if you want to go that way, I'd just like to get it on the floor.
In the same way with Vice Mayor Bennett, if you've got something that you want to address in the same work session that's concerning, that's kind of concerning, I guess we could do both of them at the same time, so it sounds realistic.
I don't think we need the motion. The manager can process that for us.
Mr. Manager, can we do that?
Yes, sir.
We just get them both on a work session, you know, get the information that you want to be brought out and get it to the manager, keep me aware of that, and I'll make sure that it gets on a work session.
I retract my motion as long as that's going to go forward, that's what I'm interested in.
Yeah, I think it's kind of hard to put exactly-
I would request that maybe we give us, you know, several weeks to pull this together.
You've got other things to do, I know.
We got, we got pretty big fish to be frying right about now.
But you understand what I'm asking about?
Yeah, low-lying lots and construction where they're not fully draining.
Properly drained, right. Because I see them quite a bit, and people coming in buying these homes that's not from around here, and they buy the home, the next thing you know, they have water problems, and they didn't realize it was in a low-lying area.
Basically, what you talk about, a lot of this is infill development, so what we can do to mitigate the effects of runoff from the new houses when they're mixed in with older houses, and that infill development is what's creating a lot of the problem, because the new houses are built up 18 to 24 inches higher than the lower ones, so I assume that's a lot of what you're talking about.
I would think there's probably two parts of that. It's that plus lands that are not properly drained anyway that may be, we see some of this is actually in the ag area too, where-
Yeah.
Lots that never been built are now being built.
Well, we'll get it on a work session, and then once we have it on paper, I'll run it by both of you to ensure that, or that the manager understands what you want, and we'll try to incorporate it into a work session. Okay? Did you withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Motion withdrawn?
If you're talking about infill, that's what's zoned, that has already been pre-zoned, and that's where the growth-
It's, it's not that it wouldn't be allowed.
Right.
Infill development is allowed, it's just a matter of what measures we may be able to take to mitigate the effects of that infill development. It wouldn't be prohibiting infill development, because as long as it adheres to the code, a lot of things adhere to the code, but they still create an issue. So I think the point of contention is what can we do as a city to try to mitigate the effects of that, that legal infill development?
And I think some areas are really looking at that and where in they have full drainage, and they're saying that it's creating a problem already, and building houses there is creating more of a problem. So why give a permit that you know is not going to have proper drainage? If it's, I know it's byright, a person had it property, but is there anything that law will allow us not to issue permit if it's not properly drained? That's all I'm asking. Is there not, through the city, when someone comes in for building to permit or what have you for doing that, they talk about that for drainage purposes? That's already not looked at through, through Public Works or someone, utilities, that tells them that this is, this is the drainage that's in this area? Do we know or do we do that? I understand, Councilman Goldberg, what you're saying, but if you look at Pewsville, all the houses that's been- I've been down there. The subdivision right there is being built, a whole subdivision just about being built.
That's part of it. I mean, when we did, we sit down in the work session, we talk about what, the manager will bring it forward, he'll explain that based on his zone and what's it done, what is allowed byright. He will also explain, have staff explain, you know, you can't just willy-nilly build something, there's still runoff requirements and everything else that are required, and then even in- And then even, is there anything additional that we could do on top of it? So, Councilman Ward?
Yes, so, like you say, when they come there, they got rules and regulations that it can be done and cannot be done. Now, somebody must be dropping the ball. Cause you have, we should have that. And when you call out Pewsville, they've been saying this over the years and years and years, some of the villages. So now, you know, just like, I wanna ask city manager, can, and I want the public hear this, do you oppose the build a house on a paper street? Tell them the rules because this is not the first time I'm hearing this. And I have witnessed some of this happening when they come up. Then we have, we give the developer the push, just like Councilman Goldberg said, isn't there rules that we gotta go by to stop this before it even happen?
Generally, yes. The street's gotta be, a house gotta be facing an improved street. So if a paper street's not improved, then say it's second lot in and it's not improved, it should not be constructed.
But we keep seeing these problems. And I call it the high side. When developers do something that we already know that, yeah, that's not what we saying, but he can change a direction and build it. I mean, it's almost like common sense, they out slick us and the people in the community suffers. And just like what, and there's something going on, I don't know about developing and building houses, but the community been talking about flooding and these houses coming in and flooding the old houses out. I mean, it's like mind-boggling that this been going on for a while. I mean, so, and we know this, do y'all know this? You don't know this? Do we got a study on it or something? Because this happens and it keep on happening. Now with this big boom, everybody concerned that you can come to, come to the villages and build, I've been looking at it myself, I see seven, eight houses. Where does, where this come from?
That could be report number three.
Like Councilman Johnson said, you look around, next thing is up.
And I'm thinking of Pewsville, I've only known of, there's two structures that, hey, we're aware of for the BMP, but, and there's one other that was built on top of an existing foundation where a house was burnt that's not quite on an improved street, but that was a pre-existing structure that had burnt and they built back up. But now, I'm not aware of any.
I can tell you a story. I can tell you an example. It was a gentleman, I forgot the block, the streak was on. He wasn't, he was not supposed to build a house, he built two. And he's supposed to live there, and he didn't live there. He rented it out. The rules was to stay there at least a year or two. Someone came in this council, when I was on council, and said that the man lived there and his daughter go to school. I went round there and checked it out, knocked on the door, and he don't live there at all. So what I'm saying to you, yes, I understand what all y'all saying, but what I'm trying to say is that it should be some rules already in effect that somebody might, or we find, somebody might be dropping the ball. Especially what Councilman Bennett said as far as these houses being built and they getting flooded out. I believe that should be something that somebody, we should already know that. And we already know Pewsville is low, I mean, I, I just can't see that all the time. Except with the flooding going on in the villages, and it's not just Pewsville.
Councilman Goldberg? And I would like to just mention one thing on the paper streets, and you correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, but in regards to paper streets, and people always say you can't build on paper streets. And I think you, I mean, you can't unless, if you're a developer, unless you improve the street. You have to make the street usable so the average person, the average person's not gonna buy a lot and then do the streets. So what happens is developers are able to come in and buy four or five lots and they develop the street. You know, they improve the streets and now it's no longer a paper street, it gets to be a real street. But it takes money to do that.
Exactly.
And so people look at it and their perception is, you just let the developer do something that you wouldn't let me do. Well, I know you could have done it if you got enough money to put a road in and take care of the infrastructure and the drainage from the street, so.
I understand what you're saying with that, but I'm saying to you that, if what you just said, you wanna tell me how many paper streets been built? You gonna count how many developers built a street?
And now, as far as what the parameters are to build them, I don't know. I'm just talking about the paper street part.
I know what that's supposed to do, but that, I don't see too many paper streets being paved.
Councilman Goldberg?
I don't know a developer that's gonna risk going out and building on a piece of property without coming to the city for some type of prior approval to do so. They are bound to do that unless they just wanna maybe waste money because the city will catch them and stop them and put a decease order on them. And doing that, they always come in and, and do that. They're not gonna risk that, that money to do that, not that I know of, anyway.
That's what I'm saying. There gotta be some rules.
But something maybe that's another issue that we can bring up at the work session?
No, I don't have no problem. I mean, another story, one time they had a street and some, and one person put gravel down, rocks down. So it's not like saying they come in here with, this happens.
Two stories. Okay, another, councilperson, Mother Barlow, over there in the corner.
Flashing lights. I, I know we need to save this for our work session, but I just had one comment because I had a long discussion with the health department last week. And I think one of the things we're facing in these low-lying neighborhoods, if we're developing an entire subdivision, planning goes through a process to see what the impact of those houses are gonna be on the environment that they're being built in. And it's considered as a whole, as a project. And all of the houses and their impact on that particular piece of geography are considered. When we're doing these backfill homes in these established communities, they're, they can only review them on a lot-by-lot basis. They don't look at the overall impact to the geography that they are being built into. And I think, I would love for that to be part of the work session, that we talk about that, that why aren't we considering that, you know, a development like we would a new subdivision? We're, we're not treating our older neighborhoods with the same degree of planning that we are with the, the new developments. So I just would, you know, like that to be part of the, the.
I see the manager taking.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and again, I know, you know.
Lots of notes.
Councilman Johnson opened a can of worms and that's good because it was a can of worms that needs to be opened. Thank you.
Mayor, I can't let that get away. To my knowledge, when they go into a subdivision and they build, the city considers that, the planning department considers that. They consider what's going on next door, how much runoff it would be, to my knowledge, every time I've seen something. So I disagree.
Well, I say we'll bring it up at the work session. We good? Okay, let's move on to announcements and comments. At this time, we'll ask if media and community relations director, Tim Kelly, has any announcements? And I would take, like to take just a minute, just in case you missed it, you know, this isn't assistant media and community relations director, it's not interim media and community relations director, it is media and community relations director, Tim Kelly. So congratulations on your appointment, sir.
With an introduction like that, I hope I don't fail with the announcements tonight.
I've been seeing you for so long.
You set me up, you know, so. Well, we'll start out with some awards. That's something we always like to talk about, and we're gonna talk about fire and rescue tonight. Fire and rescue department strongly believes it recognizes its own when they're found to be deserving of accolades. And fire chief Michael Baraki recently announced the following well-deserved honors. Office of the Year, Captain Keith Johnson, he's on the right-hand side of your screen. Paralympic of the Year, Master Firefighter Medic Bryant Dodson, he's in the center. And Firefighter of the Year, Master Firefighter Charles Mullen, who's on the left-hand side of your screen. We'd like to say congratulations to these three members of Suffolk Fire and Rescue for their accomplishments. Suffolk Department of Public Works reports that the dredging of Bennett's Creek was completed this January with a 3,350-foot channel being dredged to a depth of eight feet. The operation took 11 days to complete with almost 15,000 cubic yards of dredge material removed and deposited at Cranny Island. The dredging is performed on an as-needed basis as part of the longstanding agreement between the City of Suffolk and the Army Corps of Engineers. Federal funding from the Energy and Infrastructure Bill was used to cover a portion of the costs. The second of three films in the Star Wars at the Center series is set for Friday, February the 11th, that'll be at 7:00. Suffolk Tourism and the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts partnered for the showing of these films with Empire Strikes Back up next and Mission Just $2. This Black History Month, celebrate black history, achievements, and overall excellence with the Suffolk Public Library. A variety of events and classes will be offered for all ages. There's just a few of them. Okay, they have a current events talk planned, a Black and Super event, which is a celebration of black comic characters and black comic creators, and a Black History Month celebration, which is a day full of rich culture expressed through various mediums. For a complete listing of events and activities, visit SuffolkPublicLibrary.com. The Suffolk Workforce Development Center is partnering with the AARP Tax Aid Foundation to provide free assistance in the preparing and filing of moderate to low-income citizens' taxes. This will be held at the Suffolk Development, Suffolk Workforce Development Center located at 157 North Main Street. Tax preparation services are available Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 9:45 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon by advance appointment only. The last day for the tax preparation service is April the 18th. Suffolk Parks and Rec has opened registration for their spring youth sports leagues. That includes outdoor soccer and T-ball. Registration is underway, closes on March 1st. You can visit the Parks and Rec website to register or if you'd like more information. The Virginia Department of Health, as mentioned earlier, has a couple of COVID-19 testing events at the East Suffolk Recreation Center. They're set for Friday, February the 11th and Friday, February 25th. They'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. each day. And residents seeking a COVID vaccine are encouraged to visit VaccinateVirginia.gov. Of course, there's also the website at the bottom of your screen. Again, if you're looking for some testing opportunities, VDH also has those there as well. And as we always like to leave you, the ways we reach out to our residents and business owners, the number in the upper-left-hand portion of your screen, very key, 5144,000. If you're able to get connected with city services, maybe you have questions, we have staff there to help and get you routed in the right direction. With that, I'll say good evening to y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, sir.
I will now move on to announcements by council, and we'll start with councilperson, Mother Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I would like to extend condolences to the families of former councilmembers Milteer and Gardie. It was quite a shock to lose both of them in one week, and I know we all are feeling great sadness for their families. Just wanted to express that. Wanted to say congratulations to Tim, he already ran out, but was happy to see that appointment. Also, as always, thanks to the members of the civic leagues. I was at the Greater Oakland Chuck-Tuck Civic League this past week, or before that, two weeks ago, anyway. Always appreciate their input and the other civic leagues that always bring things to our attention. I just want to say, I think we, we had lots of discussion on some very serious things that are facing the city with regards to the compensation plan and the discussion that we just had prior to the announcement section. And I have great confidence that this group here on this dais can work together to come up with good solutions for both our employees and our citizens. And I thank everyone for their comments and look forward to the work, work session where we discuss more of these things. And with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
And I'll try to be quick. First, I'd like to thank Al for his presentation tonight. We're gonna get it done quick, Al. I'd also like to extend my sympathy to Jeff Gardie's family and to Curtis Milteer's families. Every time I walk in the restroom back here, I can hear Curtis, cause he's coming out and he says, "How are you, young man? How are you, young?" So Curtis, I'm almost as old as you are, but he was sorely be missed and he certainly served this council well. Congratulations to our three police officers, I won't call the names because it's been done. Tim Kelly, Andy Franklin, who's kinda backing Tim up now, Carla Carter with our, with our lawyer's office here is leaving us and we will sorely miss her. She's been a remarkable asset to the city for 16 years and I wish her well, we'll miss And that's it. Particularly, I want to say thank you to the public works people for coming forward. They are truly, truly underpaid, Al, and we need to make sure that we look after these folks. They do a tremendous job and I certainly wouldn't want to do without them, as well as fire and rescue and everybody that works for the city. And with that, I'll simply say good night.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm gonna be real brief. I want to say congrats to all those firefighters that got the awards, well-deserved. They always prove that they're at the front line when things are happening. And you have to, I appreciate what they do. If you do not think that they're who they are, I would challenge you to put a full set of gear on and go into a front door of a burning house and try to pull somebody out and then tell me all about it. The police officers are just as important, but don't forget, fire doesn't give a second chance, no more than a bullet gives a second chance. So don't underscore one from the other. They both are equally important, as well as every one of those public works people that came in tonight. And I appreciate each and every one of them. After what he told me, I'm blown away that a guy gets $11.91 to pick trash up, or $13 to dig in the street to correct a problem. That blows my mind. That really does. When we have other agencies out here getting $15 an hour to pick up a box. This is absurd. This is crazy. This is below poverty level, $11 an hour. Wow. Good gravy. And we're talking about a budget that we might not be able to pay these people? God, we gotta be able to pay a lot to these people for 11 bucks an hour? Jeez. So anyway, I want to, again, thank everybody that came out tonight. Tim Kelly, first class, it was a good, good pick for him as director. The guy is phenomenal and he'll do great things to help us. Carla, you're going to the bigger and better things in life, I guess, and you, you can always come back to home if you need to. You know, there's always a place in Suffolk, but we really, truly dearly appreciate what you've done for us. And I've had the pleasure to work a couple of things with you and I appreciate it. So good luck in your endeavors, but don't forget us, okay? Also, the Curtis Milteer family and the Jeff Gardie family, my heart goes out to those families. It was a surprise to me, like most of you probably, we heard of Curtis and then all of a sudden, a day or so later, here comes Jeff Gardie. So that, the first time that I've been on this council that I've seen two councilmembers pass within the same week, or within a few days. So my heart goes out to their families and we'll keep them in our prayers, in our thoughts. So with that, we've had a lot of discussion tonight. I guess I'm gonna just sit back and see where this pay plan goes, but I'm not gonna fold my cards in that easy. And I'm gonna fight to get to that 70, or I'm gonna have a lot more to say. So with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna be brief. We lost a true statement, I mean statesman on Monday, former councilmember Curtis R. Milteer Senior. Mr. Milteer served the Wellaville Borough and the City of Suffolk for 40 years. Not only was he a city councilman, he was, he also served as mayor, past member of the Suffolk Planning Commission, and a member of the Transportation District of Hampton Road. He will be truly missed. Please keep the family in prayer. And on Tuesday, we lost another statesman, former Suffolk City Councilman Jeff Gardie of the Holy Neck Borough. My prayers go out to his family. Please keep his family in prayer also. I'd like to congratulate Tim Kelly for his appointment as Director of Media and Community Relations. Great job. Tim, I was glad to hear that you, you received that appointment and you've already proven to us that you, the type of work that you do, and I know you continue to make us proud. My word for the month of February is fairness, impartial, and just treatment or behavior without favoritism or discrimination. With that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to give the family of Curtis Milteer condolences and also. I too would like to give the family of Curtis Milteer condolences, and also to Jeff Gardie's family condolences. Again, as I stated in the prayer, I hope their memories will always serve as a, a blessing to the families and to all of us for the efforts they've done. They served, as I said, grace with respect, and I, I certainly want to miss some of the conversations that I certainly had with Mr. Milteer up here on the dais, since they were absolutely delightful. Also want to congratulate Tim Kelly on his promotion. I also, Carla, you already missed, I congratulate you, but what I think Mr. Fawcett said, you're welcome back anytime. You've been terrific and a big help so much. Also, I, I saw the Public Works group that came in tonight. I too, it was somewhat shocked with the salary level that they had. They certainly work very hard, and I would hope that as we get through this compensation plan, we can take care of all of our employees the best we can. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, I'd like to also give my condolences to Curtis Milteer family. He was, when I first did Suffolk Happens TV show and Suffolk Happen newspaper, I featured him on my publication, and that's when he was mayor of Suffolk. And ever since then, most of the time when I see him, I'll call him Mayor. But one thing about it, and you've been up here 10, 10 years, 12 years, and he would say in his speech, or say to you, "This is not my first rodeo." So he did about 40 of them, so I'd like to, like I say, give my condolences to the family. And he will be missed on some of the things, when you talk with him, he'll come up with some little joke or so. Jeff Gardie, I had the pleasure of working with Jeff when I first got elected, and matter of fact, I sat next to him, and he was one of the guys who would help me through certain times, and, and he was all, he was there for me, he calmed me down like, like another councilman. So I thanked Jeff, and he, he taught me well. He would tell me things that would benefit me, and don't forget, my first person I want to elect on planning, and I had to get the votes, and Jeff said, "Lou, that's what you want?" Yeah. And he said, "All right, let's make it happen." And don't forget that he made sure I got that appointee across. And Carla, I want to thank you, because when I came on, people don't like to say it, but you be green, don't know, you think you know, you don't know. And I came to your office, and I asked you, "Give me some definitions of what they be using, the words." And you showed enough gave me a book that thick, and I really appreciate you, and I always thank you for that. And one of the things that I mentioned to you, I was fond of, to see you in action, and I told you that I was so proud when it was a question asked, a legal question, you said it fast, strong, you knew your work, you knew your job. And I thank you for that, and I told you in the office I'm proud of you, just to see you when you have a, explain something, you explained it well, and like the councilman saying, "Good luck to you, and it's great, you'll be fine in the future." Al, I want to ask you a question. I got a few calls that, when they did the streak in Pewsfield, I don't know, they didn't get the residents enough time to move their cars, I mean, you know, I don't know even in the near future, let them know, put some signs or posters, because you got a lot of people, cars was there, they weren't unaware of, it was coming to pave the street, and like the young lady said, you got a lot of elderly people there. So we gotta make sure they're aware of that, any type of work, and we're gonna be doing some work there, at least let them know what's going on. I think you got enough people who are interested in what's going on, and you, I don't think they're not hard to find, you can tell them any Wednesday they come, so you let them know what we doing there, and I appreciate that. Also like to congratulate Tim Kelly. One thing about him, he professional, and he always try to help you any way he can, and I appreciate that with the utmost, and I think he'll do well for the city. You know, like someone else said, that a lot of times people take things for granted. We don't know what to work, or who have to work to get things done. And what I always like to hear the council say, and the people to say, "We got a great city." You see what we have working for us, and see how, how much they getting paid. So, yeah, when you, when you say how great they are, don't forget, you know, they gotta get paid. So you look how they came in here, and one councilman said he ain't know to make $11. I have no idea myself, but to know that we can do better. The city have grown, the city, I said it again, potential we have in the future, we have a great city. And one councilman said, "Yes, people like to move here, people like to come here, but we gotta keep them here, and gotta make sure we doing the right thing, not old things of 40 years ago. We gotta do the right thing, what's going, move forward, not backwards." So I hope we do the right thing with the workers, the employees, so I hope that, that'll work out. And like one councilman said, "We got a good council. We don't agree on everything, but I think we put our mind, our heads together, we get the job done. We'll get it done." I think the mayor gonna make sure of that, and all the other council will make sure we do the right thing. And with that, I'll say God bless.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd just like to start out by saying my condolences to Milteer and the Gardie family. I served on council with both of the gentlemen, and Mr. Milteer is definitely a true politician and a statesman. I think he took the place of Mozart Riddick, and Mozart Riddick passed on. I think he took the helm of Mozart Riddick, and any information that you want to know history-wise about anything in politics, you could call Councilman Milteer, I don't care what state level, federal level, or whatever level it might be, he can give you the history of all of that. I will truly miss him. He was here when I got here, I was here when he was made mayor, I was here when he served as vice mayor, and he never changed. He was the same gentleman each and every day that I worked with him. And a little, little funny note, sometimes people would say, I think, that Councilman Milteer was sitting up there asleep. He wasn't asleep, he was meditating, because if something came up, I guarantee you, he could tell you everything was said, and when time to vote, he didn't have to ask you what was he voting on. He knew exactly what was taking place around him at all times. He was a man of a lot of wisdom, and even after he left council, I could just about bet every week, just about, he would give me a call and just to chat. I think he just liked to talk to people, and wanted still let people know that he still is concerned about what's taking place in the city. So I will truly, truly miss him. He and I have not always agreed on situation, but that did not change our relationship. He and I were friends from day one until the good Lord called him home. Sometimes I know people, when you disagree with somebody, they take that as you have a problem with them, they take that to the grave with them. That person don't like me because he disagrees with me, but he was not that type of person that you could disagree with him, and tomorrow we could be sitting up somewhere having coffee or something together, and that was in the past. He never held that against anyone. He was truly an honest man with integrity, he's a hard-working man, and I don't believe anybody in the city has worked any harder for their constituents as Councilman Milteer did. And I have to give him kudos because he was the one that really brought this thing about neighborhood improvements, when it started in Saratoga. He's the first one that brought that forward, and it went on and on and on, that he got what he was asking for. One thing he asked for, he wasn't able to get before he died, that was a raise. He wanted counsel. I got it. It came up after he left, but that was something that, he was adamant about two or three times, and it didn't happen. But that's about the only thing that I know that he asked for, that he didn't accomplish with, with, with that. So he would greatly be missed, and I will, I missed the calls from him, and he was, he was a friend, he was a friend. And Mr. Jeff Gardie, same to him and his family. We were together, I think, for eight years when he was on council, and we all had a team effort in moving things forward, and we all got along very well. Jeff was a real down-to-earth guy, he had no funny things about him, he would tell you just what he thought and how he felt, and I can appreciate that from anyone that I, I deal with, is be honest and upfront, and even though we might not agree, still tell me what your true feelings are and what you think. Congratulations to Tim Kelly on his promotion to director, and also the three firefighters on their award being honored. Want to congratulate them as well. Calls, we go way back, don't we? About 18 or 20 years, I think, I was here about, before you were, but anyway, you've been a hard worker in that department in the legal side, you've helped a lot of people with information, and you've been very supportive of this council. You would definitely be missed as well, and I don't know whether they offered you a counter offer to where you were going, but maybe they should have. They didn't? Oh, okay. Well, maybe I shouldn't have said that. But anyway, I really hate to see you leave, and, but I know that everyone looked better their conditions than their families and whatnot, so I wish you much luck and success in the years to come with your new endeavors, whatever you want to do. Set your goals high and go for it. So I say, and congratulations to you on your next journey. I want to thank the firefighters and all that came out tonight to hear about the comp study, Public Works people, police and fire. I think we appreciate you letting us know exactly some of the needs and concerns. It's shocking really to listen to, when I, I think, I doubt any of us knew that people was making $11.91 an hour. I thought minimum wage was $15 an hour, I don't know what it is, but I thought it was $15 an hour.
Ain't gone up that high.
Ain't gone that high yet? But that's, that, I mean, that's, that's low. I mean, out here today, working for less than 12 hours an hour, we definitely need to do some of that. We definitely need to do some of that, and I do thank all of them for coming, and it showed me that they really, really are together and they are really hard-working people, and they deserve to be treated as the spokesperson said, with equal pay and whatnot, to try to show their families, they have families too. And $11 an hour, ain't too many people can pay rent and take care of all the other things that have to be taken care of with the family. It makes me cringe a little bit to hear that, I, I really do. So your work is cut out for you, Mr. Manager, so we'll be talking more about that, I'm sure, in the next few days. And with that, I don't think I had anything else. No, I don't know, I might have a couple more things. Yeah. Now that's it.
You sure?
Right now. Yeah, I'm turning. Thanks a lot, and y'all have a great evening and be safe.
All right, I guess I'll finish up, and I'll start off by offering my deepest condolences to the Milteer family and also the Gardie family. Both of those individuals unselfishly gave their time to be dedicated servants of the people, and that's what they were. Councilman Milteer's 40-some years service, I think it's kind of like Tom Brady retiring, I don't think anybody's gonna catch that record anytime soon. And he's out there right now figuring out how he can run one more time, I think. I had the privilege to serve with Mr. Gardie for eight years and with Mr. Milteer for 10, and as a lot of council folks up here have alluded to, you know, Councilman Milteer had some sayings, and one of them I used to, one of them I kind of latched on to, and that was deliberate speed, you know, we need to use something with deliberate speed. So I'm sure he arrived in heaven at deliberate speed, you know, he's there now, looking down on us. I'm gonna miss Mr. Gardie stopping by the dealership every now and then, get his car worked on, and, you know, he's just a all-around good guy. I mean, that's, I guess that's the best way to, to describe him. We had some rather robust conversations this evening, and that's what we're here for, especially in regards to the compensation plan, and I think, you know, pretty much everybody's on the same page, it's just a matter of how we get there and what we're comfortable with. The compensation, you know, we, we got into Public Works, you know, I too was kind of flabbergasted with some of these numbers here for Public Works. I mean, that's kind of, I don't know, it's kind of embarrassing, I think. I mean, it really is. I mean, we're talking about adjusting folks' salaries 5%, 10%, 15%, 20%, and we're, you know, we're close to six digits, and we've got people working for 12 bucks an hour. You know, it's, especially in Public Works, and I know they've had to step up. Mr. Washington, you know, came forward and represented his folks, I mean, he's, he's a manager, and as a manager, you can tell he has a true concern for those that he has charged to manage, and he presented his case very well, and I'm sure this would be part of the conversation also when we look at the compensation plan. What else I got here? Carla, thank you for your service, and I wish you only the best in all your future endeavors. I'm sure you'll be a huge asset where, well, I kind of get an idea where you land, but even if someplace else, you'll be a huge asset wherever it is that you land. And I think it's about all I get it for comments. Yeah, I'm gonna be pretty brief. Flock cameras, we had a little, and that'll go into my next thing, you know, we talked about flock cameras tonight, and I attended a Stop the Violence Forum this past Sunday that was at Renee's Celebration Center on Washington Street, and it was very well-attended, there were probably at least 50 or 60 people there. And what was really impressive was the conversation, and that's what it was, it was conversation. And during that conversation, not a single, a lot of people came up and spoke, and they talked about, some individuals talked about their personal experiences, whether, you know, their, their family member was a victim, or their family member actually perpetrated the crime, and then we talked about the neighborhoods. But the most refreshing thing to me, and the most uplifting thing to me, was nobody in that room did anything except say, "We need to take responsibility for our own actions, we're responsible. The police department's not responsible for this, there's no other group of, of people responsible for it. We need to take responsibility for our actions, we need to be responsible for our families' actions, we need to be responsible for our communities' actions," and that was the whole gist of the conversation. And it was one of the, you know, when I go to attend something like this, you never really tell what's gonna happen, you know, things can go sideways in a hurry. But I was there for two hours and 20 minutes, and it wasn't like that, so I commend them. It's, it's just one of those, it's the type of conversation we need to have as we move forward with some of these public safety issues, where we can get honest, unbiased conversation with the community, because who knows better how to address issues in the community than the people that live in the community? They know. We don't know, we can surmise, but when you live it, you know it. So that's where we need to get our advice from. These flock cameras are a good start. I've always said there's really, you know, I'm, I'm a proponent that the, the city can do three things when it comes to trying to address violence within the communities, and I'll go- I'll go into some others number there, but, you know, I'm about lights, cameras, and code enforcement. Lights, cameras, code enforcement. There are three things that, they're, they're tangible, you can see them. They will make a difference. Your citizens will see that they make a difference. And then once we do that, we get the citizens involved, and everybody has to be part of the solution. It can't be we're gonna depend on the police department, because all they're gonna do is be able to respond. But these, these flock cameras that do the tag recognition, if you will, will be a nice tool to have in the tool shed, so we'll see how that works out. We talked about violence, and I'm always, I don't keep up with much news, but I do read the newspaper every morning before I go to work, and there was an article week before last on region homicides being on the rise, which, you know, that's not news that most people don't realize, but this is all the way across the country, and there's some huge numbers. And I'll just forget the four pages here, but an interesting statistic, it talked about all the Hampton Road cities and the 2021 homicide rates, and knock on wood, I mean, I'm not chirping, you know, you can't, yeah. We talked about homicide rates, and this was based on per hundred thousand in the population, so it's relevant to populations also. And per one hundred thousand people, Portsmouth had thirty-five point eight homicides, Norfolk had twenty-five point six, Hampton had twenty-four point one, Newport News had sixteen point four, Chesapeake had, no, I'm sorry, sixteen point six in Newport News, ten point four in Chesapeake, six point four in Suffolk and three point three in Virginia Beach. So, we had the next to the lowest homicide rate of all the Hampton Road cities. Now, is that good? Yeah, it's great, but you know what? One is too many. One is too many. So, that's the number we need to aspire to be, would be zero. Knowing that we'll probably never get to zero, but it, it's a great testament to the, to the job that our police department's doing, it's a testament to our, our citizens. And then there was another article that came out, I think, the following week, and this was a study that was done by Old Dominion University, it's about, it's a fifty-some-page study, but I haven't read it all, but I did read the synopsis of it, and just the highlight was, and this had to do with quality of life, and how, how the citizens rated the quality of life in their city. So, they surveyed, I don't know how many citizens, and it's got all the Hampton Road cities in it. Chesapeake seventeen point eight percent ranked the city as excellent. Now, these are the percentage of citizens that ranked their quality of life excellent. Chesapeake seventeen point eight, Hampton nine point nine, Newport News four point one, Norfolk thirteen point two, Portsmouth five point nine, Virginia Beach twenty-seven point eight percent of their citizens categorized their quality of life as being excellent. In Suffolk, twenty-eight point six percent, the highest percentage of citizens that ranked their quality of life as excellent. Now, think about that. We don't get to beat Virginia Beach much. We need to beat Virginia Beach. We beat Virginia Beach. We have the highest. So, all those folks we're talking about, they're all part of that. Everybody's part of that. We're part of it, the city manager is, the city staff, you know, fire, police, utilities, I mean, if you're not getting your stuff, you can have no quality of life. So, this is a great testament, we gotta be doing something right. So, anyhow, good news, stuff like this. What really bothers me is every now and then you read something in the newspaper, but we kinda get left, Suffolk gets left out a lot from the picture, but we got a lot to be proud of. And with that, I'm gonna go to my quote of the night, it's from Travis Bradbury, and it is, "Influential people are never satisfied with the status quo. They're the ones who constantly ask what if and why not? They're not afraid to challenge conventional wisdom, and they don't disrupt things for the sake of being disruptive. They do it to make things better." And with that, I will say good evening and ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve.
And we have a second from Councilman Ward. Any discussion in the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Labarlo, Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.